Good evening. The Charter Township of Plymouth Board of Trustees meeting for Tuesday, May 22, 2018, will come to order. Mr. Clerk, please take the role.
Trustee Kermy.
Yeah.
Trustee Dorsey-Evitz.
Here.
Clerk Vorba, here. Trustee Dempsey.
Present.
Trustee Heitman.
Here.
Supervisor Heisey.
Here.
Treasurer Clinton.
Here.
All present, we have a call.
Thank you. Next up is Item B, Pledge of Allegiance. Representative Stewart's already standing up, so I think he will lead us in the pledge. Thank you, sir.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Is this mic coming in really, really hot tonight?
Loud.
Does it sound very loud? It's not my fault, so. I'm going to, yeah, you're hot. Taking this thing off, and I'll try to hold it at a decent distance then. I know the sound people don't like this, but. There we go. Okay. In a motion to approve the agenda, Item C.
Mr. Supervisor.
Mr. Clerk.
I move that we approve the agenda for Tuesday, May 22, 2018.
Comment? Motion's been made, and is that a second?
Comment.
I can second it, but I had to make a comment.
Seconded by Trustee Dorsey-Evitz.
Would it be prudent, maybe to flip five and six, just so we know, we see Mark's presentation before we talk about fire? So we get an understanding of that?
I'm okay with that. Sure. Okay. So five becomes six and vice versa. Any other questions on the agenda? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next up is Item B, Approval of the Consent Agenda. Any comments or questions from the board?
I reviewed the bills. Got all my questions answered, thank you. One question slash comment is attorney consultations. Maybe we ought to look at a process, or maybe you already have it in place, because I noticed a lot of .1 hours, .15 hours for even a simple thing like me complaining that the building cut down the trees and the DDA. Should those be filtered by you before they go to the attorney, so that everybody's not calling up the attorney? I'm just trying to think to a cost control concept, but just, you don't have to make a decision now.
Okay.
I'm just giving you a friendly reminder that maybe we need to look at some of that, so that things don't get long and drawn out with everyone calling up the attorney, because he's on the meter all the time, and maybe some people don't realize that.
Okay. No, thank you. Any other comments on the consent agenda?
Yes, speaking of cost control, I noticed $700 for NAPA auto parts. Once again, the question is, did anybody look at AutoZone from Plymouth Township who has guaranteed that they would lower our prices, as the police have already done bringing their invoices in? I'm just bringing it up. We're looking to save money.
Were these bills from like a month ago?
Yeah, they're old.
Yeah.
I've looked at it.
Okay.
I think most of those were from maybe DPW, the big ones. Because they have, NAPA does a, we do a check for almost every purchase, which is expensive, and we're investigating them doing a monthly billing, which I know they can do. I've worked at other places where they have a NAPA or a DNF open account, once a month billing. It reduces our internal labor to generate checks and process invoices.
Yeah, we had four separate accounts on this one. Plus, we had probably 15 line items within those four accounts. That's a great idea if we can do it.
Cindy Kussner said she would look into it.
Okay.
But we should follow, yeah, should follow up on it.
Good. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments or questions on Item D? I need a motion.
Mr. Supervisor. I move for approval of the consent agenda.
Okay, the motion's made by Clerk Vorba. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Heitman. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Item E is public comments and questions. This is not your only opportunity during the evening to make comments or questions. We have another opportunity at the end of the meeting, and we also encourage questions that are relevant to each agenda item. Ms. Bondi.
Susan Bondi, Plymouth Township, living in Lake Point.
Which mic should she use tonight?
Which one? I won't even get close to it, because I, my, my voice will just reverberate. This has nothing to do with anything on the agenda, but in light of the recent stories about Nestle and the water crisis here in Michigan, they are encouraging, on the news tonight, they were encouraging all municipalities to weigh in on this, basically selling or giving water away to Nestle, to any company, because it's setting a god-awful precedent for other companies. And essentially, as a resident who pays well more than $200 a year for her water, and I don't even have a pool, okay, I think the majority of people in the township would be just as outraged by this as, as many of the other municipalities in Michigan. So, encourage you to, to say something, okay?
One way you can do that is to don't buy bottled water.
You're right.
And recycle the.
Yep.
Container, which maybe should have a 10-cent deposit.
Right.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else? All right, let's move on to new business. Item F1, the Approval of Contract with Corporate Benefit Solutions. Mark, you want to?
Yeah. Thank you. You know, there are, there are three things that are kind of driving this decision to move in the direction of hiring a new agent and a new HR consulting company. The first is that our HR Director, Joanne Kubatis, is going to be retiring in the fall, so we're going to be losing that experience and that knowledge. The second point is that we've got open benefits enrollment that has to take place effective September 1st, so we have to prepare for that. And then the third thing is that we have a number of union contracts that will be expiring by the end of this year. So, we're going to have to somehow deal with all of these three things in a relatively short period of time. And then I'll add a fourth, which is, we're always constantly trying to figure out how we can save money, both for our current employee benefits and for our retiree benefits. So we've been working pretty extensively with a number of companies and honed in on corporate business solutions to become our agent, the benefits consultant and agency for our, for our benefits. And then along with that, ECTO HR, so we can outsource the HR function. Last week, we had a presentation by these folks. I think there was a lot of discussion, a lot of concern about, you know, oh boy, I don't necessarily want to move dental plans, or I don't necessarily want to move payroll plans. I'm not asking that tonight, in terms of this resolution. All we're asking for is that we sign the agreement to bring these folks on as our benefits and our HR consultants and agents, so we can start to prepare for these upcoming events that are going to be taking place. When they're onboard, absolutely, we will continue to look at our benefit plans to figure out how we can provide the same or better level of benefits, but save costs as part of the process. Included in this package is also a license agreement for an online registration portal, so people can start to use a self-service type of a benefits administration program. That's part of this whole package. So the representatives from Corporate Benefit Solutions, as well as ECTO HR, are here to answer any questions, and I can answer any questions as well.
Thank you. Let me just add that we are going to continue with ADP for our payroll processing for at least another year or so. We certainly took into account the testimony of our finance director, who indicated that on top of the audit and everything else that's happening in a very short period of time, that it would be very, very difficult to make that transition at this time in history. So that was the primary driver on that. Any other questions or comments by the board? Yes?
Clint.
Chuck?
How much do we anticipate saving on just this one contract? And what are the metrics that we're going to use to measure success or failure? We may not have them now, but those are important questions, in my opinion.
Well, the first, so the answer to the first question, in terms of how much money we will save just by, just by bringing Corporate Benefit Solutions onboard, we, we don't pay them anything. They are paid by the insurance providers through the premiums. So the answer is, we won't save any money, we won't lose any money as part of our process. That's a wash. In terms of outsourcing the HR function, we've taken a look at what it would cost to have an internal resource versus an outsourced resource, and we think we can save roughly 35% as part.
You mean when you count a fully benefited director?
A fully, you know, loaded with, with salary and benefits and fringes, et cetera.
But that requires doing the ADP also?
I'm sorry?
That requires changing our payroll?
No. No, no, no. That's just.
So that 35% is without changing payroll processors?
Correct.
Does that 35% include the automated signup, instead of a manual signup?
That would be, there is a, there is an additional fee to that, that would be roughly $6,000 for that automated benefits portal.
The online enrollment system?
Yep. Yep.
So if we have, I know there's a legalese in there about termination. Effectively, how do we deal with, if we're not satisfied with the service, or we're not saving money, how long are we entangled for? Even if they do a good job, let's say, you know, they're doing a good job, but it just doesn't work? Can we?
You want to try that?
Can we kick you to the curb earlier?
The answer is yes, you can kick us to the curb, so just a 30-day out. If you don't like us, you can give us notice, and we'll be gone. Same thing with ECTO. If there's a situation where they're not working out, or you don't feel that the services are meeting your needs, you can give them a 30-day notice and terminate services.
But even if you, because it has a clause in here that I noticed that said, you have the right to remedy the situation.
We would like to have that, that solution available to us, yes, but in our world at Corporate Benefit Solutions, if you just give us a 30-day notice and kick us to the curb, as you say, then that would be, that would be our out.
Okay. Also, Mr. Supervisor, after we, this is just bringing them onboard to be consultants, and at that point, we'll still have discussions about the different types of benefit plans that are out there, and the employees will be included in, in getting that information, correct?
Yes.
When does your start date?
We would like to start as soon as possible, preferably next week, to get onboard and get in. As we discussed at the last board meeting, it's really a matter of time to get things done as expeditiously as possible, so getting onboard and getting, especially ECTO, in talking to Joanne to understand the processes, and so we don't miss anything. We also have a tremendous amount of work to do to build that online system, and our, our deadline for starting that is June 1st.
This is directed to Joanne Kubatis. How many of these processes are written down?
(Inaudible).
Okay, so that's a start. So the first thing you should ask for is the written-down processes before you show up.
Absolutely, that would be great.
So you can study them.
Fully intend to do that, is if we can get a green light from you guys tonight, that's, that's on our agenda.
Okay.
Love to work with Joanne, thank you.
All right. Any other questions, comments?
I just want to make sure that you did confirm that employees' input is going to come.
Yeah, let me, let me address that, because the clerk did mention that, and I do want to make it very clear, because, you know, we are live on TV, and I know people watch the tapes of the meetings. Once, these, these people are consultants and advisors and contractors to the township. Once they are engaged by us officially, and as of right now, they still aren't, then we're going to work with them, and our plan is to work with all of the bargaining units within the township, all of the leaders of the various unions, to discuss the proposed recommendations, the proposed changes, so that we have as much input and hopefully as much buy-in as possible. So this is a collaborative process. We are not switching people's benefit plans tomorrow morning. If there's any questions that anybody has, call me, come up to my office, shoot me an email, and we'll answer them in great detail. So, this is, this is just the first step in a multi-step process that will involve the, the employees through their bargaining representatives.
And I'd rather that happened than murmurings that this is going to happen and, you know, gloom and doom, because it's not.
It probably, in retrospect, the presentation that was given last week, or last meeting with Corporate Benefit Solutions, I coached them through that presentation to show, and I wanted really, to be honest, to showcase their capabilities. They have been very good to work with and, and very aggressive in trying to figure out how they can address our marching orders, which were to give us benefits plans equal or better in coverage at a reduced cost. So that was that presentation that you saw, and the matrix that you saw. I think they've done a great job, but that's not to say that that's what we're going to implement on day one. It's really just to showcase the, the fact that they can be very creative, very aggressive, and do a good job.
Well, certainly, the client testimonials attest to that, and working with other townships is, was absolutely key for me, so I appreciate that.
So the guardrail is that nobody will be worse off, there won't be any takeaways, and some people may be better off?
That was what we, that's what we asked them to provide.
In terms of benefits?
Yeah. Yep.
Okay. All right. Any comments or questions from the public? Hearing none, I'm looking for a motion to approve. It's a rather lengthy motion, so.
Mr. Supervisor.
Mr. Treasurer, do you want to do?
I'll give it a shot. I move to approve Resolution Number 2018-05-22-29, authorizing the attached 1 Client Service Agreement and 2 Business Associate Agreement between the Charter Township of Plymouth and Corporate Benefit Solutions, along with the attached 3 Business Associate Agreement and 4 License and Service Agreement between the Charter Township of Plymouth and Accordware LLC, subject to attorney review and approval, and to authorize the supervisor and clerk to sign the agreements.
Motion is made by Treasurer Clinton. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Heitman. Mr. Clerk, please take the role.
Supervisor Heisey.
Yes.
Treasurer Clinton.
Yes.
Trustee Kermy.
Yes.
Trustee Dempsey.
Yes.
Clerk Vorba, yes. Trustee Dorsey-Evitz.
Yes.
Trustee Heitman.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Item 2 is Approval of the Contract with ECTO HR. Pretty self-explanatory cover letter. ECTO HR is a full-service human resource outsourced and a consulting firm. They would be assisting us in our day-to-day HR needs and compliance issues. Again, this is going to be an evolutionary process. I, I think that we want to do what's done in other sectors, especially in the private sector, where these, these services are outsourced. I think we're going to take baby steps before we are fully on our own, or we're not going to be on our own, but when we're, you know, we're going to be on training wheels for a while before we can ride a bike, and it's going to take some time, and we certainly are looking forward to, to working, you know, with Joanne and you guys on the, on the transition. And that's, that's going to be a big focus over the summer months. And then, once you guys are fully onboard in the fall, then we would be, again, taking it in phases, so that you're, you know, we're not totally, fully independent, but, but really working very closely with you guys. So this one is a little different in terms of fees, correct?
Yeah.
Could you explain that?
Yeah, the, the current agreement letter states that for the first, for the transition period, where ECTO would be spending more time in working with Joanne and getting themselves ramped up, they would, they would charge us on an hourly basis. They have varying rates based upon the position that joins. It would be maximum of $7,000 per month. And then after the initial startup phase, I'm assuming after the benefits enrollment program, then it would go to a more normal structure, where it would be in the neighborhood of two to three days a week. Again, it would be on an hourly basis, based upon the role that the person who is working with the township plays, and it would be a maximum of $5,500 per month.
When would you see the president level, or maybe director level, but certainly a president level? When would you see his $200, her $200 an hour showing up?
Go ahead, yeah.
So the, the president level is my boss, the owner of the company, Steve Williams. He's had a lot of experience with townships, I think, if you see the letter from Colin Walls, a lot of that specifically, or Steve and I both worked with Colin really closely. So that would really only be, I mean, in the first few months, to be quite honest with you, we know we're going to invest way more time than $7,000 worth. So, you know, we put that maximum there, so you don't have a blank checkbook for us as consultants. We know you don't want to have that, that's, that's not our goal. So we would all spend a lot of time in these first few months to get to know, you know, everybody, the position, what's going on, and he would be heavily involved in that. And then moving on, it's really just on those higher-level strategic issues that he would be involved in. And again, each month, you still have that maximum fee, so even if we go over on hours, you know you won't spend more than that amount.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Don't go away.
How does this contract get canceled?
Same thing. Honestly, with the 30 days, if you're not happy with us, you just pay us for whatever time's invested at that point. We will not leave you high and dry. We, we don't do that with any clients. If there's a mutual separation, or if you're unhappy for any reason, which I really hope is not the case, but there's no set, you know, time limit or anything, just 30 days notice is what we would request.
All right, on the last page, you're saying that you have an inflationary increase in 2019 of 5%. That appears high?
Yep.
Based on present inflation running at 2% to 3%?
So that's not even a guaranteed increase, that's just our way of saying that at the end of one year, because, you know, we don't know you very well, you don't know us very well, that's giving us an option to, you know, raise the maximum fees each month if we feel we need to. We don't typically give, you know, 5% increases to our clients every year. It's just something where kind of the, I don't want to say the fear of the unknown, but we don't really know the amount of time we're going to need to invest. We are putting a maximum cap, so it's just giving us a little bit of leeway to be able to raise that a little bit at the end of year one. It's not a guarantee that it'll be raised, there's a chance you might not even invest as much as $5,000 a month, but it's just kind of leaving it there, and we're guaranteeing we won't raise them more than that. But it's not an every-year thing, necessarily.
Now, this is a comment directed at our department heads and elected officials that are, since they're being paid by the hour, people need to be aware of that and not waste their time like you may a regular employee or something that you think is salaried. So the, the meter is running, so it, we're, to be successful, we're going to have to be conscious of how we handle our requests and organize our work.
And I'll just comment on that really quickly. I'll first say, we're very conscious of our time. If somebody calls us for a two-minute phone call to ask us a question, we're not going to track that time and bill it. We're, you know, we're very flexible on that. Now, if there's 22-minute phone calls, then maybe we'll bill that, but we're not going to turn on the timer, everyone, someone calls or emails us and has a quick question. We are very conscious of our time on our end as well, so.
But if those 22-minute phone calls are because of something that you didn't explain properly or document?
Yes.
Certainly, that would be.
Absolutely, and we have, you know, every Monday morning, we have an internal staff meeting, where we all talk about things going on with clients, issues, things, and we don't bill any time to any of our clients for that, and that's typically a two-hour meeting where we're discussing all client issues. So little things like that, where, I mean, again, I know it's hard, because we don't know each other yet, but I think you'll come to find that we're, you know, very easy when it comes to that, and we're not tracking every single minute for everything necessarily.
I'd like to make one point of clarification, if I could.
Sure.
That the term of the agreement is for one year initially, and then after that, it's consecutive 30-day periods.
And I, I will say, and if we need to fix it for any reason, if there's any, you know, if you're unhappy or anything within that first year, we will absolutely abide by the 30-day notice. So if we need to fix that, because I understand it's important to have that in writing, I'd be happy to do that.
Okay. Any other comments or questions by the board, by the public? Need a motion? Mark, you want to do that again?
I move to authorize Resolution Number 2018-05-22-30, approving the attached Administrative Services Agreement between the Charter Township of Plymouth and ECTO HR, Inc., subject to attorney review and approval, and to authorize the supervisor and clerk to sign the agreement.
Motion's been made by Treasurer Clinton. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Clerk Vorba. Mr. Clerk, please take the role when you're ready.
Trustee Heitman.
Yes.
Trustee Dempsey.
Yes.
Clerk Vorba, yes. Trustee Dorsey-Evitz.
Yes.
Trustee Kermy.
Yes.
Treasurer Clinton.
Yes.
Supervisor Heisey.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Next item is Item F3, Great Lakes Water Authority Contract. Patrick, you want to start, or Mark, you want to do it?
I think Patrick can.
Okay.
Good evening. This is Amendment Number 5 to the Township's Wholesale Water Service Agreement with Great Lakes Water Authority, formerly known as Detroit Water and Sewage Department. The existing wholesale water agreement has a provision in it which calls for a periodic re-opener of the agreement at specified time intervals, for the purpose of reviewing certain key contract values, namely the peak hour and the max day value. This year, 2018, is one of those time intervals to conduct such a re-opener. The treasurer and myself met with GLWA representatives to conduct this process. Good news is, no major changes to the contract were, were proposed by either party, and I noted the, the only noteworthy change was proposed by GLWA, and that pertained to how often we conduct these reopeners. They prefer to have all the communities within their service area in southeast Michigan to conduct them at the same time during the same year, as a means to try to stabilize the wholesale water rate. So, instead of every five years, these reopeners will occur every four years, unless something happens in between, specific to us, the schedule, the normal schedule will be every four years. So the next re-opener will be 2022. If you have any questions, I'm, I can help you.
Any questions for Patrick or Mark? Chuck?
There'll be two. One is, when Flint withdrew from the, at then, at that time, the Detroit Water System, it added about, I think, $110,000 to our annual bill to cover capital. Now that Flint is back on, are they giving us a credit?
I, I asked the same question, and, and the answer was basically no. And the reason is, because as Flint came back on, there were others, some major communities to include Canton. Canton went to a, a tower system and significantly reduced their water requirements. So as others were going up, like Flint, there were Canton and several other communities that went to reservoirs and drove their, their down. So you have to look at the system as a whole, so the short answer is no.
When will Flint be withdrawing again?
I think they signed a long-term contract, didn't they?
Well, they were building that pipeline at one time that started with a K and had an acronym.
Karen Gandhi Water Authority is still operational, and the pipe is there, because there's multiple communities in Genesee County that are still hooked up to that pipe. So we are, we, the old DWSD communities are left with the stranded costs of that system, of that system change.
Oh, so more communities dropped off in addition to Flint?
Yes.
And that's already happened, or it's happening?
I believe that's already happened. I think the Karen Gandhi pipe is now operational.
On Exhibit B, which gives our usage by year, in million cubic feet per year. It peaked in 2013 at 200,000, now we're going flatline at 187, 187,000. Give me the background of why that is. I know one of those years, 2012 and 2013, was a drought, but are we okay?
The, the, the volumes you see in the contract, they're, they're really for planning purposes. All communities are evaluated at the end All communities are evaluated at the end of the year according to a usage formula, and they adjust it based on that. It's based on like a two-year running average of our usage. There's a specific formula, and so they adjust that outside the contract at the end of each year, and this just represents what we're currently, what we're currently, our use is based on that average, recent average that they use for water, for water production.
So you feel safe that we're not bound, we're not locked into something in case we take on a new industry that uses a lot of water?
Correct, and that would be reflected, you know, the following year if our water production went up. This is, it's minimum annual volume. We have no, we've had any issues with the minimum, and the projected annual volume, again, is what they adjust according to our actual usage, our recent history. They just use that going forward. Each year is adjusted, and they do that with every community. It's a standard formula based on what you buy.
The new Swiss company that makes the powder used for paint, I think, or some type of coating, is that a large water user? Or we don't know yet?
We don't know yet. It doesn't show up in our top users yet.
Okay. Anybody else with comments or questions? Any comments or questions from the public? Need a motion?
Mr. Supervisor.
Mr. Clerk.
I move to approve resolution 2018-05-22-31, amendment number five to the water service contract between the Great Lakes Water Authority and the Charter Township of Plymouth, and authorize the supervisor and clerk to sign the amendment.
Thank you. Motion has been made by Clerk Vorba. Support? Support by Trustee Kermy. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Trustee Dorchevitz.
Yes.
Clerk Vorba, yes. Trustee Kermy.
Yes.
Trustee Dempsey.
Yes.
Trustee Heitman.
Yes.
Supervisor Heisey.
Yes.
Treasurer Clinton.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Next up is item four, the pension, fire pension tolling agreement with the city of Plymouth. Last night, the city commission met and accepted our settlement offer of 1.1 million dollars relating to the city township fire pension dispute, and authorized their attorney to work with our attorney on the drafting of a formal settlement agreement, which frankly is already about ninety-five percent complete because they've been working on it for weeks. So my recommendation to the Board of Trustees tonight is that I would, I'd like to entertain a motion to terminate the tolling agreement with the city of Plymouth, which would basically create a thirty-day compliance window, which both parties would have to adhere to. Kevin, I don't know if you have any other comments?
If the tolling agreement is terminated tonight, then the thirty, the thirty-day clock starts to run. If there's no settlement agreement inside of the thirty days, then the township would have to file suit to protect its claim against further statute of limitations issues.
Okay.
And we're confident that by their vote, I mean, that's, that's a public meeting?
We have, there's a motion, it was on their agenda, there was a motion, there was a vote taken, they have a motion in their record now, just like we would, and it's, it's an official act of their city commission.
So we're not worried about the thirty days, is my point?
Well, I mean, I think it's good, we need to, it's good to have deadlines.
Okay. I recommend keeping this tolling agreement in place until you have the agreement. Make it easy on yourself. Why do you want to put in place something that if it fails, you have to go to court? In fact, the friendly lawsuit thing is off the table. They're going to pay by what date is the proposal in the contract? What's the proposed payday?
I'm not sure what you're talking about.
Pay the 1.1 million?
The theory behind the settlement agreement is if, if we have a settlement agreement with the city whereby the city is going to pay the township 1.1 million, the settlement agreement will call for a deadline for the city to pay that money. If the city does not pay the money by that deadline, then the township could file suit on the settlement agreement. Filing suit on the settlement agreement would be infinitely simpler and more efficient than filing suit on a breach of contract claim against the city because damages will have already been calculated. Liability will have already been established. It's simply filing suit on a de facto promissory note.
So what's the downside of not, of not terminating the tolling agreement?
I'm not going to say that there's a downside or an upside. In fact, the tolling agreement, I believe, will terminate on its own accord June 30th. So if we give a thirty-day notice now, that's just going to end it a week earlier.
So let it timeout and work on the agreement. It appears to be that the agreement will trigger the friendly lawsuit or whatever it's called, or breach of promissory note, or whatever the term is. So there is no, nothing in the agreement that says pay by a certain date?
There's no settlement agreement yet. I drafted a proposed settlement agreement, which I put in a date. That date will have to be changed, and that will be a discretionary consideration between the parties, but the date will have to be included in the settlement agreement, which would be the triggering mechanism for a lawsuit on the settlement agreement.
Does the settlement agreement need to come back here, or is there authority for the supervisor or you to go ahead and execute that on behalf of the township?
In a perfect world, I'd like to, I'd like it to come back to the board.
Right here.
By way of an email today, I've asked the attorneys and the mayor of Plymouth to finalize this settlement agreement so that we can put it on our June 12th agenda. That's my request. I mean, I think that's reasonable, considering that most of the work's been done. So I guess, you know, I'm kind of surprised if you guys want to keep the tolling agreement alive. That's okay with me.
Puts a little tension in the system, maybe, or whatever it's worth.
We've been surprised before.
You can look at it that way, or you can say it's good to have a deadline, so.
So if there is no settlement agreement, for whatever reason, the tolling agreement expires on the 30th of June, which means we would then have to take action to initiate a lawsuit before June 30th?
Yes. Well, I would, I would say file the lawsuit on June 30th. The complaint's ready to go. But again, from a litigation standpoint, filing suit on a settlement agreement is going to cost the township and the city a lot less in attorney fees than filing a suit for breach of contract for the amended, the first amended agreement.
That takes us right back to square one, which is not.
Yeah, we'd be starting from square one. The countless hours that Cindy and Mark Crittensson have spent calculating the right number will be, could be down the drain, and there could be depositions of people in Florida, former board members, former township employees. It could, the attorney fees could go really high. So if we can get a settlement agreement, I'm going to suggest that we get a settlement agreement.
So if we don't terminate now by the 26th, which is our next, our last meeting in June, we would have to give you the okay to sue?
Yes.
So we can just keep it as is? I'm fine with that.
Yeah. I think it'd be easier. Also, you have high confidence that we're going to have an agreement by June 26th, I think, right?
I think the specific terms of the settlement agreement are not that complicated. I cannot speak for the city attorney. The city attorney, I believe, thinks there should be some bond language in there. That would be coming from the city's end of this, not from the township's end. From the township's end, the terms of the settlement agreement will not be difficult to implement.
You said bond language, in case it is bonded to be paid?
I am not going to speculate what Mr. Marzano was thinking, but a bond provision is going to contemplate a lawsuit, a lawsuit on the settlement agreement.
On, based on ability to pay?
Yes.
Kevin, is that complexity enough to hold this thing up into June, July?
I sure would like to hope not.
I have had no communication from the city that would indicate that. I think that they want to get this wrapped up and get it behind them.
What was the vote on the?
Six to one.
So we have other agreements we want to initiate with the city of Plymouth. So there should be an incentive to get the agreement because I see it as interfering with para potentially, or at least voters voting yes or no. It would affect their decision.
Okay. So we're just going to let this, no action on this item. That's fine. Okay. Mark Clinton, we're going to move down to public safety expense projections.
Okay.
Do you want to do that from your seat here?
I can do it from here, yeah. Okay. Yeah, Bob's going to bring up a PowerPoint presentation. I've been talking about this for a long time, and I think you're all aware that this is one of my hot topics when it comes to what needs to be done within the municipality. I started talking about it during the campaign. I studied the financials a lot while I was running for this office, and I made the comment on a number of occasions, and I'm sure you've heard me say it more than once, that we, the township, have been kicking the financial can down the road. In the short term, our finances look strong and solid, but as you start to look in the longer term, we're facing some significant financial challenges. So I appreciate the opportunity tonight to walk you through my analysis and show you that when I talk about kicking the can down the road, the road is not that, not that far away. So let me walk you.
The end of the road.
The end of the road is not that far away.
Can you change it there?
Yes, I can.
Wow, is that cool.
You just sit back and enjoy, Bob. So let me, let me start with legacy costs, and legacy costs have become a very hot topic within the state of Michigan, Public Act 202. The state is putting extra scrutiny and extra visibility on pension costs and OPEB costs, and we have to file reports, and we have to be transparent, and if we're not in compliance, we have to, you know, we have to file get well plans, and if they don't agree with our get well plans, other actions might be taken. These legacy costs are becoming very important. But let me show you the impact of, specifically within Plymouth Township. Okay, let me, let me lay out what this screen looks like. I've taken this analysis, and I've made this budget year, 2018, the base, okay? So this year, for example, we will be paying pretty close to a million dollars in pension costs to MERS. Now you can see that that starts to escalate at a very rapid rate, and by the time you hit 2025, that number will be closer to 1.8 million dollars. Okay, so our, our payments to MERS will increase over the next seven years from 1 million to year, 1 million per year to 1.8 million dollars per year. So that's, you can see how that's kind of laid out. At that point in time, we will be about 90% funded, so a lot of the problem is going to be solved within the next seven years, but you can see how that escalates pretty quickly. First question is, how are you going to pay for it?
That was solved by the previous boards and arbitration, by making new employees no longer eligible for a defined benefit. That's why in 2026, it drops off.
So you're, the, yes, you're correct. The problem was solved by going to a defined contribution plan versus a defined benefit plan. The reason this escalates so quickly now is because the plan is closed, and once it's closed, boom, you have to escalate the payments because no more money is coming into the plan. Okay?
So why does it drop off in '26?
Because at that point, you've, you've pretty much funded the entire thing. You're pretty close to 100% funded, and the rest is just assumptions by the actuaries. These are not my numbers, these are the actuaries' numbers, but that's just kind of cleaning up what might be left from their projections to fully fund the plan.
So there's some assumptions baked into here, I'm sure, and these are the actuary numbers, rate of growth, stuff like that?
Yeah. I mean, this is, this is MERS projections of when people will retire, when they will die, et cetera.
Then what's the cumulative effect, so if it's 100 plus three?
Let me, let me hold off on that one, then show you, and show you another slide.
Is the city of Plymouth's 1.1 million lump sum?
It is not.
Placed in in 2019 in the factor?
It is not. No. So this is, we currently owe in our pension about 9.5 million dollars. That's unfunded. Once we get the money from the city of Plymouth, that will reduce that from 9.5 to roughly 8.4. So you could see it would go down. It's not going to go down a lot. It'll go down roughly 10 to 15%, but it will go down. Okay? Let's talk about OPEB, and there's a couple ways to address OPEB, and this, what I'm presenting here, is a pay-as-you-go model, okay? This is not putting anything aside into a trust. This is as the retirees, as people move into a retiree situation and as they are receiving benefits, this is us paying for those benefits, nothing being put aside into a trust. Now, we're still going to have to deal with the state on this, right? Because we will be in non-compliance under this, but we still don't know what, exactly what the hammer is from the state. They may come back and say, okay, you have, you have closed your plan to future people, right? So that's, and this will correct itself over a long period of time. So my point is, this is pay-as-you-go, putting nothing into a trust, but as you see, the same situation is taking place. Our costs are escalating. Again, these are not my numbers. These are the numbers that is reported from the actuarial firm, Ross Watkins, that was in here probably about two months ago. Okay? So this is going to be the, the checks that we write to Blue Cross and Delta Dental, et cetera, to cover the cost of our retirees. And you can see between now and 2025, that's going to increase by about $400,000 per year.
So the city of Plymouth contribution is not in this calculation either?
It is in this calculation.
It is?
It is, yes. Yep.
It's about $80,000 a year.
About $80,000 a year, exactly. Okay. This, this is another option. Instead of the pay-as-you-go, we could pay the ARC, and the ARC stands for the annual required contribution. So the actuaries are saying if you want to fully fund this plan within 10 years, which is the amortization period, your payment must be 2.15 million dollars per year for the next 10 years. So you can see the impact that that has. So one of the options, one of the things we're going to weigh is do you want to continue on with a pay-as-you-go model, or do you want to bite the bullet and start to pay 2.15 million per year into this account for the next 10 years, the annual required contribution?
Is that a trust fund of some kind?
In that case, you would put it into a trust fund.
So you'd be achieving some type of managed return from MERS or whoever you place it with?
Yes. And they, and these numbers, again, come from the actuaries, and they're assuming a certain rate of return for that 2.15 million dollar payment. Okay? This would be easier to sell to the state. This would be much more expensive. You can see that, I mean, you're almost talking at least one mill just to cover the cost of this for the next 10 years. So those are things that we have to weigh.
How much does a mill generate, again?
About 1.75 million.
So you'd raise one mill just for that?
Yeah, pretty much.
I have a question with order of magnitude. The chart before only has three years that are at a million dollars, '25, '26, and '27. So, and all the others are under a million. Why would the ARC require 2.1 for so many years?
The ARC, this will solve the problem in 10 years. Once you've fully funded that trust, it'll pay for itself like an endowment for the rest of the retirees. The pay-as-you-go model.
You still pay.
You're paying until the very last person exits that system, which may be 40, 50 years from now.
But these numbers then drop off beginning in 2027 or 2028?
Not necessarily. I just, I'm doing a 10-year analysis here. I can, I can spread this out over the next 30 years if you'd like to see that, but eventually over time, obviously, as you get out 30, 40, 50 years, it's going to start dropping down. I mean, we currently have today about $19 million of unfunded OPEB liability. So you can tackle that all and knock it out and put it in the trust in 10 years, or you can spread it out over those 50 years.
One disadvantage of doing the ARC is there's a reduced incentive, maybe, to not modify benefits such that, you know, everybody says, oh, it's paid for. to not modify benefits such that, you know, everybody says, oh, it's paid for, you levied one mil, it's done. And it, then you go to sleep on it. Whereas if you pay as you go, there's an incentive to manage it closely. And if the law changes and healthcare becomes more controllable from an economic standpoint or cost standpoint. And also remember that these benefits, that 1.5 million, this township is not legally obligated to pay that. So that's why you'd be locking yourself in right out of the box with no ability to manage. So without, I haven't seen the total pitch, but on its face, I don't support that idea because it locks it in forever with no, no managerial options.
What, what do you mean by not legally obligated to pay?
No, they're, they're not, uh, the township could technically, if it wanted to, delete all those. They don't have to pay people's healthcare benefits if they're not employees or in the bargaining unit anymore. You don't have to do it. It's not required. It's an honor system.
We told them we were going to, and now we can turn around and say, sorry, we lied.
Well, private companies did, did that a lot.
Sure.
So.
Sure.
So, but anyway, my point is that what it does is that if you did this, you're committed and you can't tweak anything, or you're not, you have no incentive to tweak anything in the future. Look, just keep that in mind.
I, I, I think that's, that's a fair statement in that once you, once you've funded this, you're committed, you can't pull the money out and say, we're gonna use it to buy a fire truck. This is a commitment, this is a commitment to pay the retiree benefits.
I, I don't think that's what Chuck means. I think what Chuck says is that there's no incentive for the unions or the employees to make additional concessions.
Or us.
Because the feeling will be that it's already paid for, so why should I give anything up?
But also, honestly. Nobody can predict the future and, you know, unfortunately, three years from now, there could be some catastrophic event that crashes the economy and there's no money. It happens.
And I think that's why the state has intervened across, across all municipalities. This is a, this is a, a liability bomb that exists in virtually every community in Michigan. And, you know, we, we have to, we have to confront it. Everybody has been ignoring this issue, most, a lot of communities, ours in particular. And it's time to own it, you know? We gotta figure out how we're gonna deal with this in the future.
It's not only Michigan, it's everywhere.
Yeah, it's everywhere. I mean, you go to Illinois, you go to California, I mean, they're, they're bankrupt, you know?
So assuming, and, and assuming we use the pay-as-you-go model for OPEB, I've stacked these two things on top of each other. So the legacy costs now are comprised of the pension obligation and the pay-as-you-go OPEB obligation. Again, not my numbers, actuarial numbers. You can see how that steadily increases from today, 2018, and peaks in the year 2025. By that year, we will be paying 1.2 million dollars more than we are currently paying for our legacy costs.
But before you get to, to 2027, somewhere around 2024, maybe 2023, you're gonna be broke.
Hold that thought. In fact, the, the very, the very next slide. Right. So, thank you for that setup, Jerry.
You guys practiced this?
Yeah. If you forget everything, every slide, you know, anything about today's presentation, please remember this one slide. Because if we do nothing, in other words, if we continue on the normal course of business, if we don't hire another person, if we never give another raise, if we never buy another piece of equipment, if we never do anything except pay the additional legacy costs that are going to hit us between now and 2025, if that's all we do, we will be out of the money by the year 2024. If you see where that arrow was pointed, we currently have 3.9 million dollars in our general fund. We will blow through that 3.9 million dollars by the year 2024 simply by funding our legacy costs.
I don't know, I don't understand. The, the general fund, you're just saying, taking our fund balance into account?
So today, yeah, today we have.
Because we have a 13 million dollar general fund budget per year. So what are you saying? That'll use up the fund balance?
I'm saying today, we have a 3.9 million dollar fund balance sitting there.
Yeah, that's money in the bank.
Money in the bank, right? And if you take a look at the way this is laid out, that, in year one, 2019, we will spend $173,000 more than we did this year. 2020 will spend $422,000 more than we did this year. And if you add those two together cumulatively, cumulatively, we've now spent about $600,000 more. If you continue on with that model, by the year 2024, we will have spent 3.9 million dollars more. Right, we will have dipped into that general fund by 3.9 million dollars. Basically, we'll be out of money if we do, if business as usual.
But your fund balance will be used up.
The fund balance will be.
Assuming you don't replenish it every year.
That's, yes.
Okay, we replenish it every year with some money.
With some money, a couple hundred thousand dollars, right.
Only, only if the budget runs a surplus.
Yeah.
But if, if a budget runs a deficit for reasons not related to this.
Then you'll blow through this quicker.
That'll come farther than, when you look at 2022.
Does that make sense? This is, this is, this is a real important point.
This is great work, Mark.
Right?
Well, I don't know if it makes sense that, because 10 years from now, you will have put, you will have added to the fund balance. There's inflation factors and all that stuff, you have new development, you know, your revenue changes, your costs change, so.
We're pretty, pretty well built out, and that assumes.
And while you're doing economic development.
That assumes that you're not going to give any raises, you're not gonna buy any equipment, you're just paying. If we paid everything we paid this year, next year, and the next year, and the next year, and the next, for 10 years, you will blow through the 4 million bucks.
Yeah, that's, that's, thanks, that, that's a better way to, to, to present it.
If you froze it.
If you froze everything right now.
Took a snapshot.
Snapshot right now, all the way through, and, and, and we're only paying for what we're paying for right now, you'll be broke in, in 2020.
Well, not broke, you will have no money in the fund balance. You will have revenue and you will be operating. Bankruptcy is, doesn't, it's not bankruptcy, it means you have nothing in your bank account.
If I have nothing in my bank account, I consider myself broke.
Until 2025, then you're in a structural deficit.
Yeah. Right, I think, thanks, Jerry, I think that's a better way to put it, is legacy costs will burn through our entire fund balance, our current fund balance by the year 2024. So, you know, that's, that is, when I talk about kicking the can down the road, I, I'm now saying the end of the road is at, at, at maximum the year 2024. That is the next term, that's the next board. That's, this is something that the next board, if we don't address it, is going to be stuck with. Okay? Now, remember what I said, this is just legacy costs, this is not investing at all in public safety. So let's start talking about adding on some of the investments that we have to make in public safety. First thing, capital cost for fire. Now, everything I showed you previously were not my numbers, they were, they were actuarial numbers. Now I'm, I'm building in my own assumptions and working with Chief Phillips and, and working with the police department, John and Chief Tinnerington, came up with these recommendations. But if you take a look at this schedule over the next 10 years, this would be a schedule for replacing the three fire trucks in the years 2019, '21, and 2022, and four ambulances. Now, actually, you can see it's replacing three ambulances, but then the first one would be replaced again, first in '18 and then again in '26. So you can see that as we, as we recycle our fleet of fire trucks and ambulances, it will have the following impact on our capital cost. It'll go up roughly, again, $440,000 between now and the year 2026. Okay? This is, this is a little, I, I didn't know how to present this, so this is perhaps a little bit of an assumption, but I don't think you can assume that drug forfeiture funds will last forever. So I talked with Chief Tinnerington, I talked with Lieutenant Brothers, and we decided that to make an assumption that drug forfeiture fund will, will go away in the next three years. And then at that point, they would have to be replaced with what our average take is from those drug forfeiture funds, which is currently about $425,000 a year. So if we were to continue on in a normal, you know, continuing to refresh our equipment and capital within the police department as we are today, without the benefit of, of drug forfeiture funds, it would cost us an additional $425,000 a year.
So we've, we've been addicted to drug forfeiture funds.
Been addicted?
Yes.
And I'm not, and I, and I don't know if it's going away or not.
No.
But if there has been rumblings that it's something, so I think it's the prudent thing to do to assume that the drug forfeiture funds will go away.
That, that's been the trend in, in a lot of legislatures where they're changing that. And that discussion has gone on in the state legislature, and they're bringing it back again to make it even more stringent.
Plus, we don't know what the effect of legalization is going to be long-term. I mean, marijuana is gonna be legalized in Michigan by the end of the year.
Yeah, I believe so.
You can take it to the bank. So as far as other drugs, you know, that's, that's gonna be a different issue. But, you know, you're right, Jerry, forfeiture laws are, are being amended continuously in Michigan. And that's, that's gonna impact these things.
That's, that's a really good point, I hadn't really thought about that. So, so what portion of drug forfeiture funds have come from marijuana seizures over the years? Anybody know?
I don't know if they break it down like that, but, you know, I mean, just saying, it's, it's certainly not gonna go up if that's, if that gets legalized, you know?
I never thought of that.
Oh, and, and obviously, we have some, some contract negotiations coming up. I just put in an assumption here, take it for what it's worth, a 2% annual salary increase, and you can see the impact that that has on the bottom line as well. We will, by the year 2027, our salaries, if we, we implement a 2% salary increase, will increase by pretty close to a million dollars a year. All right, so.
That is, that is a very.
So did you?
Very conservative assumption.
Did, did you project revenue enhancements due to growth in property values?
I did, I did not. The, the way the headly rollback works is, we're pretty much locked in. I mean, our, our, our property tax revenue is not going to go up, it'll only go up by the cost of inflation, which will be 1% to 2% a year. This is, and, and.
Except for newer, if you do a greenfield, it will be greater.
That's true.
Much greater. So if you, if you develop the corridor, you will get fresh investment.
Yeah.
A fresh revenue, so.
This, you know, and, and again, understand how I'm doing this analysis. I'm starting with 2018 as a base, I'm saying this is ground zero, and I'm showing you what's going to take place when you look at the legacy costs, when you look at capital requirements, you look at salary increases, et cetera. What's going to take place over the next 10 years and can we afford it, right? And, and, and I can go into much more detail and I can make assumptions in terms of what's gonna happen with revenue, et cetera. But this is directionally correct. What I'm really trying to show you is, what happens if we do nothing?
And, and this is just salary increases, is this including any type of other benefit cost?
It does not.
Okay.
It does not, right? I mean, I guess you have to assume that healthcare costs are going up, but I didn't, but I didn't include that in there. So if you pile these things on top of each other, the total impact, the legacy cost, plus the capital cost, plus the salary increases, et cetera, you'll see that with this graph, we will be spending by the year 2025, 2.7 million dollars more per year than we currently are spending today, okay? That's the second graph that I want you to engrain in your mind. So what does that do now? It's, instead of running out of money by the year 2024, we'll run out of money if we're investing in our public safety, as we should in terms of capital, people, et cetera. We'll run out of money sometime between the year 2021 and 2022. We'll have burned through that general fund balance. All right, let me, let me step back a little bit and, and talk about our millages because we, we've got to do something about this. The, we currently have four line items on our tax bills. The first one is the general, every single township gets a general line item. It used to be one mil, but the headly rollback has knocked this down to .8159. That's guaranteed, that goes on for perpetuity. The second line item is the, is the fire millage, that expires in the year 2021. And then we have two other millages, both police and fire, that expire in the year 2025. So that's the, that's where we're, we stand with, with millages right now.
Let's just go back. And that's the total millages for the township, right, Mark?
That's it.
Four, four mills?
Four mills.
Four mills. My attitude is, you know, don't let, let that sink in before, you know, before we move, move ahead because if you look at our, our surrounding communities, it's, I, I think Northville and Livonia and Canton are probably.
Two and a half to four times that rate.
About four times, three to four times.
So, just saying.
So, how, how much of the, the general fund, do you know offhand, is used to subsidize some of these other costs? Police and fire and so on?
That's in the audit, annual audit, there's a graph in there.
I just don't remember.
Might be online, in the last audit.
I think he was asking Mark, so. Well, your point.
Yeah, no, so there is a subsidy, I, I don't know.
That he didn't know, so that's why.
Another way of saying that is, the police and fire millages don't cover the cost of public safety. Is that what you're?
That's what I'm asking, yep. And that has always been the case.
I think that's a true statement.
For the, okay, 25 years.
So, my, my intent tonight was not to solve the problem. My intent was to present what the problem is and start the dialogue in terms of, of how we address the problem. Some very simple options, right? The first option is, we can do nothing. And we can, we can kick the can down the road a little bit long, and longer, and leave the problem for the next board. Because it's not gonna be a problem in two years, it's gonna be a problem in seven years, as you can see how those things start to escalate. We can make a determination that we don't want to invest in our public safety, and then we can start cutting our budget accordingly without going out for a millage. The other option, and this will, this will be my recommendation, is to go out for a seven-year millage. And why a seven-year millage? Because if you take a look at what's expiring in the year 2025, I think we're gonna start confusing people if every other year, we go out for a millage renewal, but it's only one of those line items, right? I, I almost would like to see everything become coternumous, did I say that right? Coterminous.
I love it.
We gotta look that up.
You make stuff up.
In the year 2025. So I would like to suggest a seven-year millage that expires in 2025. Jerry made a recommendation, which I, I tend to agree with, is not to renew this one in the year 2021, rather let that just expire, and then we'll get everything lined up in the year 2025. But the option is, hey, we, we, we go out for a lower millage rate now, we renew this one, and then it carries us through to 2025.
So then in 2025, you'd be, you're renewing three millages?
Right.
Or you'd call it one?
Well, I don't know if you can do that legally.
I don't know either.
I, I think they would have to be voted on, all, all three.
You, you have to be very specific when it comes to millages, you either, it's a new millage or it's a renewal.
And then you really gotta go back to the original language, the adoption language and the ballot language for those two fire, police millages on the bottom there. I don't know, I don't know the answer.
So how many mills are you proposing for the seven years?
So, don't hold me to these numbers, okay? But I think if we were to let this one expire and, and get everything lined up in the year 2025, I think it's about a mil and a half. If we were to renew this one in 2021 successfully, then I think my request would only be around a mil. Maybe in, in that range, okay?
If you go back to this, go back to that page, it had 2.7 million on it as the gap on the right side. What is, you don't need 2.7 million?
Well, that, it peaks at, it peaks at 2,000, it peaks at 2.7, right? But I need, basically, I need the average of that, I need that kinda in the middle. Because, because if I, if I go out for a mil right now, I'm gonna be putting money aside early, but then I'm gonna be. but then I'm going to be spending it later in the cycle.
But you also have costs that you had to make up, and you're paying those off now, your retirement costs and things like that.
Can we start, if this, under your, under the suggestion, can we start setting aside money for OPEB?
Yes.
It's not going to be that huge number that you showed us.
It's not going to be enough to satisfy the state. It's not going to get us up to 40%.
But it's part of a get well plan, though.
Would that actually be language in the millage which would mandate a board to set that aside for OPEB?
It could be.
I wouldn't recommend that.
Depends on the...
You would not?
It depends on the, what the state law provides for ballot language, and there's also explanatory language, and I'll just tell you, I mean, the rule of thumb is the longer the language, the more people reject it, because...
Understand that, but what would prevent a future board from rating it?
That's right.
Well, you know, people got to do their homework, I guess. I mean, I think it would be part of our get well plan with the state on OPEB, and if a future board is going to violate that plan, then they're going to be in trouble with the state and the voters, frankly.
Yeah, there's a check valid.
Well, there hasn't been a check yet.
The other has. They stopped the problem for the future.
Well, the future problem has been cured because the plans have been closed.
But we've been known to spend money on things that we didn't actually...
What?
Approve that we were going to spend money on.
No, everything that this board has ever approved and previous boards, capital was approved or voted on.
So you voted for $800,000 parking lot, and you voted for an $800,000?
The board approved it. I voted no, but the board approved it.
But I mean, previous board.
Yeah, it just doesn't happen.
I'm just leery, as Bob brings this up, it just says, okay, let's make sure we're spending the money on what we're supposed to spend it on.
Okay, so a mil, one mil would give you 1.6 million?
1.75 million.
1.75. And oddly enough, that's exactly what... We've increased the payroll since we took office in November, will have, by $1 million a year. We added six firemen, one or two policemen, you know, created a director's job, whatever we did.
Wow.
So, no, but anyway, we added a little bit here and there. So it's about $1 million payroll. So the offset to that is we increased the millage to cover OPEB and that item, because that $1 million a year payroll is not sustainable without raising taxes, most likely.
No, I don't necessarily agree with that. I mean, if you look at the 2018 budget right now, we've included those headcount in there. Now granted, the three additional firefighters we're talking about are only in there for half a year, but we still have put in place a budget for 2018 that brings us about, puts about $300,000 to the bottom line. So I think...
Even after the budget amendments of last week?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. So I think we can, you know, the increased investment in public safety in terms of additional police and additional firefighters, et cetera, we could support that with our current budget. We can't support these legacy costs, and we can't support the investment in the infrastructure that we need for the fire department without going out for some type of millage.
And police. I mean, we can't assume that the drug money is going to be around forever, and even with the drug money, there's still, you know, there's still things that have to be bought, dispatch issues, computers. You know, we've deferred a lot of things in this current year budget because we wanted to prioritize other issues in the police department. My question for you, Mark, is that supposed to be Richard Nixon up there, or is that? That's not, I know that's not me. My hairline's not that bad yet.
Chuck just got a new haircut, so it's pretty close.
One thing, one thing to think about here is, now that all of the state concerned about legacy costs, I think it will put incentive in place, because most communities cannot afford to raise taxes 50%, because that's what we're pushing on, you know, 25% to 50% is what we're asking for an increase. There will be more incentive to do cooperative stuff, like, because right now, everybody's reverting to the old way, go in their own, everybody's feeling rich again, and you guys that are doing economic development, the biggest way to develop economy is to have lower taxes in a state, like many people are moving to the Tennessee, Kentucky area that, because they have lower taxes, especially at the income level and on pensions. So if you want to keep baby boomers around and their money and their talents to help out, you don't raise their taxes too high.
Baby boomers are moving into the city of Plymouth in droves right now, and their tax rate is probably four times as high as ours.
Baby boomers or...
Millennials and young people.
Millennials, yeah, but I'm talking about baby boomers. That's me.
I do think...
Old guys like me.
I think you're, anyway, I disagree, so.
I do think it's a good thing to tee up, though, is when you see cut up there, Mark, you only said you could cut the capital budget for the fire department. That's the only thing I heard you...
No, no, no. If I said that, I apologize. We, our costs are going to increase between now and 2025.
For equipment and for legacy.
But my point is, when you say cut, you have to show, I think, taxpayers that you've done everything possible to cut, where there are economies to be made, or where there's shared services to be agreed upon.
Yep.
I think you have to show, especially those people who are on fixed incomes, that you're doing that, you're trying to do that. You can't just throw these numbers out, as valid as they are, and say, vote for more money. That's, I don't think that's a good approach, and I suspect a lot of people that move into the township do so because of the tax rate, as opposed to those who move into the city. They like the services, they like the convenience, so you have that kind of demographic, and if this is going to succeed, your recommendation for a millage, I think you have to make that showing, that you've done everything you possibly can to economize and to share services. My personal opinion.
No, I, and I agree, I guess it was a little bit of a, I put it up there as an option, but it's an unrealistic option, because you can't cut our budget by $2.7 million. It just, it couldn't happen. Now, can you cut it by a little bit and reduce the millage request? Sure, I think there's a compromise there. Yep.
Okay.
Just, I'm sorry, just one more point, and the other option is to, if you, if we did, those numbers that I was throwing out was still a pay-as-you-go model for the OPEB, which still has some risk when it comes with the state. The other option is the ARC, which I'm not showing up here, but that will, that will, this option I'm recommending here kind of gets us through the year 2025, and then the millages come up for renewal, and then we can step back and reevaluate where we are. I know we're going to be in much better shape if we do this in the year 2025 than we are today, but it gives us a chance to reevaluate and figure out what the next millage suggestion should be. The other option is to basically fix the problem in the next 10 years, which would be that ARC. Now you're talking about in a neighborhood of two and a half mills, and I'm not sure that anybody has an appetite for that, which is why I'm kind of going towards this recommendation of getting us through the year 2025 and then reevaluate when it comes up for renewal.
Mark, what differentiates these two police and fire millages that are on here today? Is it just when they came?
Yeah, separate millages, and I think historically, they were separate millages, and then they were renewed, and as Kurt suggested, when you renew it, you have to keep it intact, as opposed to asking for a new millage.
So if we let the fire one expire, we would do a police and fire joint as we have with the other two?
Those two would continue until the year 2025.
But Headley keeps chipping away at all of those.
Yeah, yes.
So by 2025, that police and fire millage at .5621, I don't know, but it's not going to be, it'll be less. I don't know by what factor.
I just got the factors for 2018, and it's not, it's not huge.
But it does, but it does decrease by law.
It keeps ticking away. Yeah, that 4.0033 will become about 4.
So...
But it's not going up.
You might have said this, but what happens to the numbers if that millage in the .933, the one that expires in 2021, fails?
Then we lose $1.75 million per year between the year 2021 and 2025.
If it fails, but we talked about just having the, are you talking about the one that just says fire?
Yes.
So if that just goes away, though...
It's still 1.7.
Yeah, your, do your long-term assumptions assume that that millage goes away?
There's two options. I could either, so if we go for, if in 2021, we ask for a renewal of that millage, then in rough numbers, and don't hold me to these numbers, I would ask for an additional mil now.
Now.
If we just let that one expire, I would ask for an additional 1.5 mills now.
You did say that.
Okay.
So why 1.5 if I've got almost a mil here?
Because we were, that one would expire. We would just let that lapse.
Yeah, that .5, that additional .5...
But you want a mil if I let it expire, and you want, yeah, I'm looking for, why isn't it 2 mil? Why isn't it 1 mil that you say we need if we let this expire, plus .9932?
Because it's only for four years.
Okay. So, okay.
Kevin, putting, or Jerry, putting something on the ballot, what's our timeframe?
Well, we're going to have to act by the...
It would be November.
Yeah, it would be on the November ballot, and we'd have to act by the end of July.
End of July, the language must be approved...
Yes.
And submitted to the county.
Yes.
That's awfully short to consider this.
So we can't bind a future board or presume what a future board is going to do in 2021 to let that lapse?
Well, that's another point.
Usually, millages don't lapse, they usually get brought back.
Again, I mean, can't predict, you know, what that next board would look like.
All right.
Can we ask the attorney to start drafting up some sample language, or at least begin researching it?
Sure.
Because we got, you got a lot of questions tonight about what can be said and not said, and how much should be said, and I know that there are, you know, there are word limits, and then there's summary, and then there's sort of the long form and the short form that shows up on the ballot.
Is one of the questions, then, whether it can be limited to legacy costs, paying off legacy costs? Is that one of the questions that you're, that would be asked?
Yeah, you can look into that, but I still wouldn't restrict it to that, because in my mind, equipment is more important than legacy costs.
But the point is, then, you're making a commitment, sorry, the point is, then, you're making a commitment to the voters that the purpose for this is to solve...
Whatever it is.
This problem that everybody knows about.
Right.
I mean, everyone knows about this problem, and the problem's all, it's national.
But it's more than legacy costs. I mean, it's equipment, it's, you know...
Well, I'm not, I'm just saying, are you going to, is the attorney being asked to identify whether we can put a millage on the ballot that's targeted only at a specific use, whether that's legacy or fire and police equipment or whatever? I assume the answer is yes.
I mean, he can, I mean, I, yeah, I agree, he should research that, but I would just caution against it. I think it should be, I think it should be broadly construed so that this is a millage that's going to go for quite a while, and I think it should have, the board should have flexibility in the future.
I would like to know, though, legally, whether we could put it on the ballot for a specific purpose like this. It may not be the wise thing to do, but is it permissible?
Okay.
I'm going to have to look into that.
Yeah.
There's a provision in the General Property Tax Act that talks to ballot language for specific proposals. I'll look into that.
Are you thinking this would have a better chance of being accepted by the voters if it were spelled out that way?
Well, this is the first time we've ever discussed this. I don't know if I'm prepared to answer that question right now, but I do think there is a legacy cost problem that everybody knows about. I don't think the average voter in Plymouth Township knows the magnitude of this. I don't think they understand that the, these three millages do not fund public safety all by themselves. I don't think there's that. I could be wrong, but I think there's a huge education process that would need to happen. And then you're talking about putting something on the ballot this year, which is a gubernatorial election year, with other things on the ballot, other property tax issues. I think that needs to be all thoroughly, openly, candidly, constructively discussed.
Well, there's never a good time. And then you run the risk, which we've seen already...
I'm not arguing against it. I'm just saying we need to thoroughly vet this.
You put it on the ballot in August, and then you're going to have people say, oh, it's a stealth election.
Definitely not in August.
You put it on the ballot in 2019, and then we don't, then it'll really be seen as a stealth election, because we don't have anything on the ballot that year, so...
Well, I did go back and do some research, and there was a millage renewal for one of these or two of these in February of 16.
I am philosophically against those kind of things. I mean, I'll always do a no vote on...
Well, I'm not necessarily philosophically against it, because it does tell people, this is the issue you go out to vote for, but it may not be the wise thing, it may not be appropriate, but...
I wrote the law that outlawed all of that, so, I guess I can't defend it, so, okay. Anybody else have questions on that? Anybody in the audience? Yes. You got to come up in the front, because, you know, we are live.
Live, yeah.
You're on TV.
And you're on live TV. There's 13 people watching, you know?
I know.
And 12 of them are us. And my mom.
I just wondered if anyone knows when the library millage expires.
I don't know. Library millage, does anybody, Sandy? I don't know.
I...
That might make a difference in how people will look at a new millage after they no longer have that one.
That's a good point.
Yeah, I can get you that information, I don't know off the top of my head.
Well, even if it expires, it will be requested to be renewed.
A school craft is already, right?
Yep.
Did someone else have?
Yep.
I'm Amy Coleman, I live on 93...
The big one, to talk into that.
This one?
No, the big one.
The other one.
The big one, yeah.
And I'm a little confused. We're considering a tax for recreation, and we can't meet essentials. It doesn't make any sense. Fire, safety, you're talking about that, and then you're talking about a tax for recreation.
Get closer to the mic, I think.
Perhaps we should look at priorities here. What's important to our community? Safety, fire, or parks and recreation? Because you're going to raise a lot of taxes, and my understanding of taxes is the more limited you tax people, the stronger the families you have. It keeps more money with families, so they can put it into education, or whatever recreation they choose. Maybe they don't want to go do yoga, or whatever else is offered. We choose our recreation, we choose our leisure. So you want to raise all these taxes. Taxes weaken families, they take more money out of earned income. So consider that, but first hit your essentials before you go to recreation.
Thank you. Ms. Bondi?
Susan Bondi, comment on that. Number one, I realize that you are not planning to put out a millage for recreation that is, would be by the park authority, and it would be a completely separate request, and definitely something that is going to be optional for both Plymouth and Plymouth Township residents, okay? And I do agree with what the previous commenter said, that obviously, I think public safety is a must, it's a need, it's what we all think our township and our government is going to provide for us, is safety, emergency services, fire, police, those are like the first thing on the top... the top, on the top of the list. And we have been grossly low for the last 12 years. We are currently at 4.003. Northville Township, which is a township and a community that is very similar to our size, the number of residents, the number of expressways, and so forth, I, probably railroads at the same time, okay, is double, double, eight mills. And I'm not sure that includes their quote recreational millage. I think we talked about this or something before.
Are you talking about Northville?
Yeah, Northville Township.
I don't know what, I mean, I don't want to be argumentative. I, I don't know what Northville has as far as a specific recreation.
I don't either, okay. But the thing is, is that we definitely need replace, to replace fire vehicles, and we need to find a way to fund this. And I think it's time we put it to the people's vote, period, okay? How much you go for, I, I hate to see you under request, but I realize that we need to start selling and educating people now. It's, I've been working on it myself, but, you know, that's part of the reason behind the Plymouth Concerned Citizens website, that lists our taxes, how they're divided up, and exactly how we fit in the scale. I think the only other community that I found that was really low was, I just saw that today. I think it was, it was like Orchard Lake or someplace with seven mills or something, which I was amazed, but that was a 2013. So I think that even low was.
And we have a neighbor called Salem where it's zero. Salem is zero. That's our neighbor.
Oh, yeah, but what, what do they have then?
They have a dump.
Yeah, they have, they have a massive dump. They have no police. They have no fire. They have no DPW. They have no roads.
But they're having a new development constructed with, how much money?
$10 million from the state of Michigan, so.
Yeah, thank you.
That's a reward for having no millage and a landfill. They're having a $10 million, and this is clearly of subsidy, to put in a new residential development. At the same time, the state of Michigan, the same entity is telling other municipalities, you better do what? Cut your budget dramatically, or raise taxes, or win the lottery? Sorry for the editorializing.
Okay, anybody else from the audience? All right, thank you very much, Mark. It's very enlightening, and I think Kevin has some, has some assignments as well. Okay, next up, let's go back to item five, Fire Department Midyear Report and Recommendations, Chief Phillips.
Good evening, everyone. Give me a moment, please, why? Set up. Well, maybe. Don't, don't give me too much credit yet. So if anybody's curious, I don't play the lottery, and as you can see by tonight's meeting, that's a good thing. I'm here to talk about the Fire Department, the decisions that this board made last year. In 2017, this board moved to reopen Fire Station Number Two. They hired three additional firefighters, and Northville Township also moved into Station Two. I'm here to let the board know that their decision is being rewarded. Prior to the opening of Station Two, when Station Number Two was closed, the response times to the Lake Point subdivision were six minutes and 33 seconds, which is way too long. It was exceedingly long. The nearest fire station, nearest ambulance, nearest fire truck was located right out here on Hagerty Road. From October 1st, I know we opened the station in September, but from October 1st through December 31st, those response times dropped to four minutes and 57 seconds. That's a one minute, 36 seconds decrease in response times by bringing in new personnel, reopening that station. That's a very significant increase. In, so far for this year, from January 1st, 2018, till today, we averaged a five-minute response time in that area. Again, a one minute, 33 second decrease in response times, three-second variation from, you know, last year, but that depends on where people are responding from. In the same time period, January 1st of 2017 through October 1st of 2017, when Station Two was closed, Station One right here had a four-minute, 59-second response time to its incidents. Its incidents included, were predominantly in this area, but also in Station Two, so it extended it. When Station Two was, was opened, Station One's response area got smaller, and we started seeing decreases in their response time. We saw from October 1st through December 31st, four minutes and 45 seconds, and so far for 2018, we're at four minutes and 31 seconds. So a 30-second drop in Station Ones. This is all incidents. This is emergency incidents, non-emergency incidents. This is everything they respond to. This is exactly what we expected. We are very happy with this. We are seeing response, drops in response times in Station One and Station Two's area. We did see, and it's on your report, it's not on my screen, slight increases in Station Three's response area during this time period. We hope that that corrects. We've had three retirees of our most senior personnel. They knew the township well. We've got a lot of brand-new people who are learning the township. We still expect to see improvements there. Now, one of the problems we still face is Station Two still gets closed. It doesn't get closed as often because, well, it was closed all the time. Station Two has been closed 15 days since it opened. The average closure was about 6.4 hours per occurrence. The longest it's been closed is a 24-hour period, and the shortest is one hour.
When it's closed, is Northville Township in there?
Sometimes they are, sometimes they are not. Northville Township also closes. It also does not operate out of that building. They're not, they're not concurrent. They don't jive with each other. If they don't have staff, they close it. We don't have staff, we close it.
So, so what's the benefit of having Northville Township in there? They don't pay us anything, do they?
Northville Township right now, they, we, we did get a very expensive training opportunity with them, saved us about $3,500. I know it's not a lot, but that was a, that was a nice thing that they, they did. Instead of us sending our firefighters out somewhere else farther away, it's called Blue Card Training. It's command officer training. Typically, we'd send our firefighters to West Bloomfield. They held that in Northville Township. That's the one benefit we got. They're paying for the, I think sundries is the right word, you know, toilet paper, stuff like that. That's what they're paying for at that. But part of the original agreement this board did is they wouldn't be paying.
But they don't go on our runs. They don't, they're just there, right?
They do respond to runs when we call them for assistance, yes.
And vice versa.
And vice versa, yes, absolutely. We, we go in their community quite a bit. We were in their community today, we were called. Today, we called them in our, our community. There was a run in Farmbrook today. They were the closest unit that responded. They beat our, our truck that responded. It was on a run over here. What you're seeing here is a department comparison of what our departments look like today. Obviously, this is Livonia, Canton, Northville Township, Plymouth Township, and Northville City. Northville City Fire Department services both the city of Plymouth and Northville City. It has the populations, has the daily roster. Obviously, the city of Livonia has 78 firefighters. Canton Township has 65. Northville Township, exact same size community as ours, has 27 firefighters. They have a daily staff of nine firefighters. We have 21 firefighters right now, with a daily staff of seven, which will, which does drop. The city of Northville claims they have a 53-man roster. They don't staff any stations daily, or if they do, I'm not privy to when they do and don't staff. During special events, I know that they'll staff at times. I, I put not applicable because I don't have all the information. And as for stations, Livonia has five, Canton has three, Northville Township has two, although one of them, as Mr. Dorshavitz pointed out, is our Station Two, and we have three fire stations. The city of Northville, you know, I put two there. I was mistaken. They have three fire stations. They have two in the city of Plymouth and one in the city of Northville.
City of Plymouth has the one at Starkweather.
On Spring Street.
Yeah, yeah, it's, yeah.
It's Spring Street, yeah.
Spring and Holbrook, yeah.
This is the Fire Department's run volume over the last five years. It's about a 15% increase over 15-year, or a five-year period. We, we did see a short dip of about 50 runs from 2016 to 2017.
Are false alarms called counted in there?
Yes, they are.
Okay, we're going to talk about that when you get to that page.
Here, here you go, right here. This is a breakdown of, of our incidents. About 41% of everything we do is a, what we call a fire run. We respond with a fire truck. We go to fires, explosions, ruptures, hazardous conditions, service calls, good intent calls, false alarms, as Mr. Kermy pointed out, severe weather, motor vehicle accidents. We send a fire truck on every one of those. And then medical emergencies make up the bulk of our runs. About 59% of our runs are medical emergencies.
Chief, what's a good intent call?
A good intent call is smell of smoke. Somebody calls and they say, hey, I see a bunch of smoke. We would respond, and the neighbor's having a barbecue out back, and there's a lot of smoke. That's one possibility for a good intent call. It's when the caller believes there's something wrong, but there's nothing wrong. Like, there is actual smoke. Actual smoke doesn't go into a false alarm. It goes into a good intent call.
Between false alarms and good intent, that's 16%.
17%.
Of your runs, what are you doing to edu, well, first of all, false alarm, are you fining? We used to collect fines. Are we collecting?
We do. I believe Cindy Kushner is working with somebody to, on that very issue. All those are, are done through our dispatch center, our police dispatch center, and they are billed out. But I am not who bills them out. I am not who manages that.
I'm talking about educating. If 17% of your resource is being wasted, that's what that is, we need to figure out a way to educate the public of how to manage false alarms, keep them down, and also good intent calls.
I would absolutely agree with you on that, education of the public. We also have a significant portion of the public that does not dial 911, that, you know, would just drive to the hospital and doesn't even realize.
So at the same time, we're telling people to see something, say something, we're also being told it's a waste of time and money, so.
Well, you got to have good judgment.
Well, how, how do we know that until we get there?
Well, false alarm is something that potentially can be.
Okay, but you're lumping false alarm with good intent.
Could I ask another question here, which is, you have severe weather. Four severe weather incidents. Does that mean?
That's not necess, yeah, during severe weather incidents.
That's not a 15-second, 15-minute situation, is it?
No, it is not, no.
So four is sort of?
Most of the time, though, when severe weather hits this area, it causes power lines down. It causes transformers to explode. It causes, well, another idea of a good intent call is a wire arcing. The Fire Department will go out, look at that, cordon off the area, saying, well, it hasn't fallen off the line, so there's no danger to people. We'll cordon off the area. That's, that's a good intent call. There's a problem there. It's just not necessarily a hazard to people. But getting back to the, the severe weather, in severe weather incidents, power lines down, we don't call severe weather. They're caused by severe weather, but that's a power line down. That'd be a hazardous condition or a service call, depending on the type. Ruptures, explosions, typically transformers exploding. I don't know exactly what those two were for 2017, but historically, that's what, an explosion could be a transformer.
Did you say that for every traffic accident, you send a fire truck, even a fender bender?
For, no, no. For every traffic, motor vehicle accident that the Fire Department responds to, we send a fire truck. We don't go on the vast majority of motor vehicle accidents. In fact, trending motor vehicle accidents, they're 7.6% here. 26 years ago, when I started in the service, they were almost 20% of our runs. Nowadays, we do not respond with airbags go off. For, there was a period of time when airbags first came out, we'd respond just because the airbag went off. We don't do that anymore. We only respond if somebody says they're injured, or people say, I don't know, I think somebody's injured. Most of the time, the Fire Department does not go. We do not send a fire truck.
So you send a fire truck if the township ambulance responds?
That's correct. So I've also talked in the past about concurrent incidents. This is one of the big things that we face. Concurrent incidents are two or more incidents at the same time. Today, we had three incidents at the same time. That's concurrent incident. As of right now, we've had 244 concurrent incidents in the township for this year. That's why we can't just say, hey, we're going to have one ambulance, and it's going to go around. Yes, sir.
Okay, so describe, give us a typical concurrent incident.
Well, I'll, I'll tell you what happened today. So today, the, the Fire Department is out and assisting a citizen, and while that happened, a gentleman at, at a business on the south side here fainted and couldn't get up. He was having some sort of, I don't know, I wasn't there. I don't know if it was a stroke. I don't know. It was a cardiac event. So we responded to that. When that happened, another run happened on Farmbrook. So now we have one crew out on a good intent call, in the middle of helping somebody, another crew responding to, another two crews responding to a person who's passed out. They might not be breathing. The reports that we got on this particular case didn't say whether he was breathing or not. While that was going on, we got another call in the Lake Point area for a woman who was breathing poorly, I believe was the exact terminology from the caller. So that was an emergent call. The crew broke off of the good intent call, or not good intent call, I'm sorry, stuck in my head, of the service call, the assist a citizen, to respond to that, and we called Northville Township because they were already in the area.
Give me an example of assist a citizen. The get out of bed?
Getting out of bed? No. Typically, when somebody's, I've fallen and I can't get up, is assist a citizen. Sometimes when people get home from the hospital and they've had surgery, we've helped them back into their home. Sometimes, anytime that somebody needs help, they call the Fire Department for it. And there's been lots, helping get children stuck out of trees is, is an assist a citizen.
Well, that's a good one.
So, so again.
That was actually my daughter about five years ago.
So 200, so concurrent incidents are, are something that we always have to deal with. We have runs going on in multiple areas of the community at all times, and we have multiple units responding. Like I said, with a motor vehicle accident, we have two firefighters responding in an ambulance. We have two firefighters responding in an engine. We also have a, a unique situation here that our neighbors don't have, is we have the 275 expressway and the M14 expressway. And our Fire Department, that's predominantly where motor vehicle accidents happen, is on expressways. Now, mutual aid. Our neighbors can give us less as they are busier in their own communities. Canton Township last year saw a 7.5% increase in their own incidents. So calling Canton Township and getting them to come into our community to help us, they've been less able to because they're busier with their own runs. Northville Township saw a 9.46% increase from 2016 to 2017. So again, we call them for help when we need it, but they also call us for help when they need it, and we reciprocate. That's part of our agreement. We reciprocate really well, but as their communities grow and they get busier, they have less resources to send us, which is why, you know.
What is the real reason that Northville experienced a 10% increase?
The real reason? I, I'm not the chief of Northville. I can't explain it. I looked at the numbers. I, I requested Northville Township, give me his numbers. I saw a, a big jump in 2016 to 2017. I did the math. I did the math, it was 9.46%. Canton Township has seen-
What I have learned anecdotally only is aging population, the proliferation of senior citizen living communities and developments, mostly along the Hagerty Corridor, some extent, traffic accidents, but it's mostly a function of an aging population.
Well, I would believe very heavily the Hagerty Road Corridor, which is why they need to use our station two.
Hagerty Road, you mean, the, all of those senior living complexes on Hagerty Road?
Yeah, I think it's called Cedar Brook is the newest one. I'm not sure.
Between five and six, yeah.
Now, there's one stat that I cannot, that we don't track, and that's when we call somebody for mutual aid and they say, hey, we're too busy, we can't come. I was trying to find that stat, but I was discussing with my officers, and I'm like, we don't track that. We don't track when we ask somebody for help and they say we can't come. We, the federal government requires us to track when they do come. So there's no data point that I can pull from my current program to say, yeah, we asked for somebody's help and they weren't available. But it happens, I can tell you. And when a storm comes in, when you have downed power lines and wind damage and trees in the houses, well, when a storm comes in, it hits Canton too, it hits Northville too, it hits Livonia as well, they're not available to help us. That's one of the periods of time when we do need a lot of help. Lightning strikes, you know, they, a lot of fires happen during big storms when lightning strikes hit. I can tell you, we had three structure fires, all from one storm, three lightning strikes. I take that back. Two lightning strikes and one was somebody careless in their home during the storm. But we had, we literally fought one fire, dropped our hose, went to the next fire, and then went to the third fire, because we had three fires including the township all at the same time.
Chief, do we know how many times we've turned down requests that they've asked us? I mean, that should be something easy that-
No, because typically, all my, when we turn them down, all three of my crews are out working somewhere, and they're like, just tell them no, we have nobody available, and they are back to work. We don't have somebody sitting in office going, okay, Chuck, we said no. All of our personnel are out on the road working.
How many runs a day? Oh, sorry.
How many municipalities in the Mutual Aid Association, Wayne County?
Eighteen.
Eighteen. I was a little surprised, last month, we gave two mutual aids to Westland?
That's correct. Last month, Westland had three apartment fires. During one of those apartment fires where a 21-year-old female and a 23-year-old male were killed, we provided rescue runs into Westland during that event.
How many runs a day do we average?
We average about eight runs a day, just a little over eight.
Total?
Yeah.
And how long does an average run take, start to finish?
Well, an average medical run for the township is later in my slide. So can I, can I hold you on that till we get to it? Thank you.
But, yeah, because I'm having a hard time understanding, if there's eight runs a day, that's an average of 2.3 per station. I'm having a hard time, no, I'm sorry, 2.6. Having a hard time understanding why there's so many concurrent runs. Math doesn't work in my head.
Because most of those runs happen at the same time. People don't just say, hey, I'm gonna wait until these people say, these people are done with their emergency before they call for theirs. And unfortunately, we are at the whim of the 911 caller as to when they call for our help. So when, so if you're, if, and I'm reading into what you're trying to say here, if you're wondering what we're doing while we're waiting, we're maintaining the apparatus, we're maintaining the station, we're training, but yes, we only respond to about eight runs a day. Some are longer, some are shorter. Motor vehicle accidents take longer, and we send two trucks. Any call where somebody has stopped breathing, any call where a patient is in what we consider, you know, severe, we'll send two trucks to that scene. So to say that it's just 2.0, what was your number?
2.6.
2.3? 2.3 per station. Well, the other station may be responding as well, like the call in Lake Point today, two stations went to that one. The call over here on Postiff, two stations responded to that, four personnel. To do, to do a successful CPR run, you need four to six personnel on scene.
This is, this is probably a terrible analogy, but it just struck me when we were talking about, Patrick, when we were talking about the water rates. GLWA, they charge us for the peak because their philosophy is, we have to provide water through the entire system at the peak day, at the peak hour in that system. So they don't bill us for what our average uses is, they bill us for what that peak is. And it strikes me that that's the same way you have to staff. Because, you know, average is not good enough because you're gonna have those situations where you have emergencies, concurrent runs, et cetera. So you've gotta be staffing for the peak rather than the average. Pokey analogy, but it-
No, it's a good analogy, but I don't think it's possible because you could have, you know, you could have a situation where you have mass casualties, right?
Right, right.
May 4th, I got 11 concurrent runs on one day.
But, I mean, you could have 100 firefighters and you could have a situation where it's not enough.
And that's correct, Trustee Dorshavitz. And that's why, in the beginning of my written presentation that I gave you, I note, I said that we have to look at our historic run volume and what we historically respond to, and we have to staff appropriately for that. We shouldn't staff for St. John's Hotel burning to the ground. That would be unattainable because, and further, that building's never caught fire. It's not something that we would expect to happen here. In Plymouth Township, what we should expect is a small, single-family home catching on fire, or a small business. That's typically what we have, and that's what we should have the staff to handle. We should be able to handle those type of incidents, our daily medical runs, our car accidents, our false alarms, our good intent calls, and all the other service calls that we go on as a fire department. That's what we should staff for. So in 2018, currently, we have 1,178 incidents that we responded to, including all those types I spoke about. Right now, we are trending to hit 3,027 runs a year. Will we? I don't know. I can't say. In May of 2016, at May 1st, we had 944 runs. We hit seven runs shy of 3,000. In May of 2017, we were almost 40 runs up, but we were 40 runs shy by the end of the year. That's just, that's just the nature of this business. We can't predict exactly how many runs will happen. This year, on May 1st, we had 995 runs, and we're projecting, you know, based on how many runs we have a day, that we should hit about 3,027, give or take.
Which will be the most that we ever had?
Most we ever had in Plymouth Township, yes. When we're the community fire department with the city, oh, we would be, we could get higher than that. But we were also lower than that at one point. The next thing I want to talk about is something that will help save our residents money, and that's the insurance service office, and I apologize, my voice is starting to go, I've been talking a lot. The insurance service offices, they rate communities. They come in and they say, is this a safe community? Does this community do what's necessary to limit their risks, limit their costs? And when we sell our service to an insurance company, they can then use these numbers to determine the rate you pay for insurance. I've given you a list of our neighbors and their ISO ratings. The, I have a little blurb for five. The higher the rating, the higher the insurance costs to the citizen and to the business. So right now, Plymouth Township is a 5.5X. That 5.5X is a direct result of us closing Fire Station Two, laying off firefighters, and not replacing firefighting equipment. In the period of time, we used to be a Class Four. As a matter of fact, we were .5, we were half a point away from becoming a Class Three. We laid off firefighters, we closed a station, we didn't replace our infrastructure, we lost points, we went to a 5.5X. Now, in the same period of time, Northville Township, which was a 5.5X, dropped to a Class Three. Auburn Hills, there was just a thing in the paper yesterday, Auburn Hills just got a three, which puts them in the top 3% of the state. Okay? We are not in the top 3% of the state. Northville Township is in the top three. Livonia is.
So lower the number, the better, correct?
The lower the number, the better, yes. So right now, Plymouth Township is a Class Five. I do have Northville Township, Northville, City of Northville ahead of us in the list, they're Class Six. They expect to drop to a Ford because they're the same fire department as the city of Northville.
What do you attribute that to? A paid-on call has a higher rating than a full-time fire department in Plymouth Township?
Well, we laid off nine firefighters, three firefighters left to retirement, we closed a fire station, so we no longer provided fire protection in that area. That's what they look at. That's how they-
Wait a minute, it's no longer, I'm talking about Plymouth Township. That area, you said the city of Plymouth. I'm talking about the city of Plymouth today has a higher rating than Plymouth Township, and they have a paid-on call process.
Yep. They also benefit from their water system, which we had market improvements to ours. I would have expected that just in our improvements to our water system-
Whose water system?
Plymouth Township.
The city of Plymouth has a better water system?
No, I said they get points for their water system.
I don't get it. Their water system is older-
They get, everybody gets point, okay, let me change this.
My point is, it doesn't follow a logical thought process of why the insurance companies would rate-
The other thing the city of Plymouth gets, which we get as well, but they benefit much more than us, and this is key, every single Plymouth Township firefighter is in their ranking. Why? Because we have an automatic aid agreement with them. So automatically, on dispatch, with the same dispatch center, we get dispatched to all their fires. So they get credit for every single Plymouth Township firefighter. Plymouth Township firefighters get a, every firefighter gets one full point. Firefighters who respond from home don't get a full point. I think they're at half a point each, and that's how they rank, how they've determined their ranking. They respond from home, they get a half point. We gain their half point per guy, they gain our full point per guy. So they definitely make out a lot better from us. Well, thank you.
Whose equipment is better, the township's or the city?
The city has much newer equipment by a lot. We have a 30-year-old fire truck.
Yeah.
We have a, we have a fire truck that we hired, that we, that was purchased in 1990, I think it was, it was purchased and picked up in 1992. I was a Rochester Hills firefighter at the time, and it was before I got hired here. And the city of Rochester Hills and the city of Plymouth both drove to Appleton, Wisconsin to pick up two trucks and bring them back together. So I know that truck because, you know, I worked in Rochester when we bought it. That's our, and then our newest truck's a 2000. The city has newer trucks, they have a ladder, they get points for all of those things.
What about equipment for fire personnel safety, like scuba gear and other apparatus?
All of that stuff. Well, we just updated our SCBA, but our SCBA equipment at the time of our review was 18 years old. I take that back, 16 years old.
So just so we don't pass over this too quickly, we have a fire truck that's, we purchased in 89.
Correct.
One in 92.
Correct.
And the newest one is in 2000.
Yes.
That's our fleet.
That's our fleet, that's our entire fleet. And when any one of those trucks is down, that station is without a fire truck. We don't have any fire trucks in reserve. Back at our previous ISO rating, we did maintain a third fire truck. The other thing to answer your point, Trustee Kermy, is the charter township of Plymouth has a lot bigger buildings. We have the Ford plant. We get, for every single building in the community, we have to prove that we have the needed fire flow, that's the term, the needed fire flow, to put out a fire in that building. So the city of Plymouth has a tower, and they have two fire trucks, and all three of their trucks, I believe, have 1,500 gallon per minute capabilities. So that's their, that's their, how much capacity their fire fleet can pump. Plymouth Township has Ford Motor Company, we have Adient, we have all these other larger businesses, but we have one 1,500 gallon per minute pumper and two 1,250 gallon per minute pumpers. We don't have the same pumping capacity as the city of Plymouth. It's another factor. Another factor the city benefits from is our dispatch center. We share a dispatch center. All of the improvements that Plymouth Township puts in our dispatch center, the city directly benefits from when it comes to their ISO rating.
When's the next ISO rating?
I would suggest when we complete the hiring of these three individuals this year, and we replace the first one of our fire trucks, which we're looking at a 2,000 gallon per minute pumper. Now that we've reopened Station Two and the other three firefighters, I would then say, we would call them and say, hey, we would like to do another review.
So we've never talked about, this board has never talked about what our philosophy is on the role of private ambulance versus our fire department transporting people. We said a year ago, we were gonna talk about that.
It's in this report.
Can I, before you start, I may have something about that in here, just a second. Thank you.
But we never did, he's right, we've never discussed what our policy or strategy is.
What our strategy is.
We know what your strategy is.
My strategy is to do whatever the board wants me to do. So 2018 budget, we, the board approved to hire three additional firefighters, bringing our staff from seven to eight. Once that happens, Station Two will not close for any period of time, except for those one-off scenarios, Trustee Dorshavitz has talked about in the past, those crazy incidents where you have three or four guys injured, you know, the things I can't plan for. When they're hired, overtime costs will be reduced. As you know, I had an issue with overtime, and we had to increase overtime because we don't have staff right now. We will be another step closer to lowering our ISO rating, and we can expect response times to continue to improve. As these new firefighters, that we have these probationary firefighters we have, learn our community, know how to get around faster, I can, I can tell you that our response times will improve. Some other benefits that I talk about more in the report I gave you, faster assembly of firefighters at all structure fires. We will have eight firefighters responding as Plymouth Township firefighters. We will have four automatic aid firefighters from the city of Plymouth, and we'll have the two firefighters in, that are in Plymouth Township responding from Station Two from Northville Township. We'll be better, we'll have a better ability to respond to more concurrent runs or incidents. We'll have either, either, three ambulances or three fire trucks, or a combination of in-service at all times. We'll improve our ability to complete core critical tasks at structure fires, auto accidents, gas leaks, and other incidents.
So wait, one of the counters to that is, we will also have more mutual aid available to all of our neighbors so they can get lower insurance costs than we can.
That, yes, that, well, to only one neighbor. We do not have automatic aid agreements with Northville Township, Canton, or Livonia, or Salem. We have mutual aid agreements with all four of them, not automatic aid agreements.
Salem, what was that last term?
Automatic aid agreements. One of the things that makes that possible is the city of Plymouth operates out of our dispatch center. When a call for a fire comes in, our dispatch center can send us out both simultaneously immediately. That doesn't work with Canton, those 911 calls go to Canton. You know, they'll still call for mutual aid, but it's not, it's not automatic.
And what that means practically, because I saw this happen, is there was a potential fire in the city of Plymouth, call came over, and one of our crews from Station Two responded to that location before the city of Plymouth or Northville got there. So because of that automatic, our crew was first on the scene.
That's correct, yes.
And so, yeah, I can understand why.
Is that a good thing, a bad thing, or just a thing?
I just, I'm just saying it's a fact.
It's a bad thing if we've got a fire at the same time.
Plymouth Township chose to staff their fire stations with full-time professional firefighters. They're available 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. We can, just by virtue of the fact that we're in the station, get to most runs before people can drive in from home, pick up a fire truck, and drive to the scene. Nothing against that. I was a volunteer firefighter for years. It's good in a lot of communities. When the run volume out, when the run volume gets too big, volunteers can't come in eight times a day to help you. I mean, that's just a fact. They have lives of their own, they have- I mean, that's just a fact, they, they have lives of their own, they have jobs they have to do.
So, so what kind of ideas and what kind of steps have you taken to try to control costs and reduce costs? What, what kind of cost savings measures have you put in place?
Well, in a real easy one, uh, we did go to Autozone, we got their, their report, we gave it to, uh, Cindy Kushner to, uh, open an account. It's taken some time, but we are attempting to open that up. Um, another method we use to control costs is, um, well, a really good one is I write grants all the time.
Yeah, of all of the departments, I mean, Chief Phillips is by far the, the best in terms of writing grants and attracting grants. And that's no slam on, on police or anybody else, but I'm just saying, it's, he's very good.
Do we have grants that were pursued? Have we been awarded grants?
The scuba equipment, radio equipment, got some more?
The Jaws of Life, the e-drolic Jaws of Life was a $20,000 grant that we wrote with, um, Firehouse Subs, that was a big one. The SCBA equipment was, uh, an assistance firefighters grant from federal government. Every single fire department in the nation competes, that's a competitive grant. Every single fire department competes for that grant. That was, um, $195,000. Replaced all of our SCBA with state-of-the-art equipment. Our old equipment would be 18 years old today. Um, uh, we got a $50,000 grant from the Department of Homeland Security for radios when we opened Station Two. I got about $20,000 in state grants for fire training, um, for fireworks money over the last three years, um, including a staff and command grant, sent our two firefighters to staff and command, uh, two years ago, last year.
About six grand, wasn't it?
Yep. And then there was, of course, the Safer Grant in 2013, uh, that started in 2014 and 50.
Chief, how many, um, over the next, I don't know, three years, uh, how many retirements are you expecting?
Over the next three years, at least five.
Yeah.
Well, that's a cost reduction because you replace them with lower-paid people that are younger. Then you pay. That's offset by increase in OPEB?
I still gotta-
Because the younger, because the younger ones are using it or because the older ones are using it?
Well, the younger ones are on the, the new plans that, that have been implemented.
When someone retires though, you're paying the retiree plus the, yeah, that's what I mean.
Chief, is there anything we can do to, uh, to help get this $53,000 in outstanding bills we still have for transport?
Oh, that's, you know what, that's a great thing, let me, um, that always, you know, uh, Trustee Kermey has always brought that up and he's always talked about that and how that, that looks really bad. Now, if you look at my last report, um, I added a slide, and I'm gonna try to find it for you.
While you're looking for that, are we doing anything to recover costs for down, for monitoring or having to guard down power lines?
Uh, yes, we are.
Yes, we are.
Is DTE paying?
No, they're not, but we are working on it.
DTE is not paying.
Because they do, especially if it's storm-related, they do file cases at the Michigan Public Service Commission to recover their storm damage costs. So if they pay a township for that because of the storm, they can go to the PSC and get recovery from ratepayers for that.
So what we're doing on that one, Jack, is, uh, the chief has put together a list of the most recent, I, I don't know how far back you're going, Dan, but, uh, the chief is putting together a list. I'm writing a letter to DTE. Um, under our utility ordinance with DTE, we do have the right to recover, uh, for emergency services provided on their behalf. It's quite detailed. Um, we've had Kevin Bennett research it extensively and, you know, worst case, we're, we're, we're kind of on step two of four right now. Worst-case scenario is that we would have to, um, file a, um, I believe it's a misdemeanor action.
Surely they would, being a good corporate citizen, they would pay.
Yeah, I, I have been working with DTE since the windstorm last year where they had a, a large amount of downed wires, um, a large amount of fires caused by downed wires. And up until very recently, they were stringing me along, for lack of a better term. And they finally gave me written confirmation that they will not pay. And that's when we, I contacted, uh, the attorney and said, you know what, they, they've given me written confirmation, they don't intend to pay. So then we contacted the attorney. Now, um-
We, we can actually prosecute them under our ordinance if they don't pay.
You mean under the emergency recovery ordinance?
Under our utility, uh, franchise agreement?
No, under the emergent, the cost reimbursement ordinance, the township can pursue recovery against DTE in two ways. The first would be by way of a municipal civil infraction, that would be a fine of up to $500. To the extent that the township's time exceeds substantially the $500 fine, the township could file suit in 35th District Court to recover those expenses. So I, I guess the, the manner of enforcement would, would depend from a practical standpoint on how much DTE would owe the township. If it was less than 500, we could issue them a municipal civil infraction. If it's substantially more than 500, file suit in 35th District Court.
All right, now to Trustee, uh, Heitman's comments. I have always put in my report, the aging, what is due to Plymouth Township? And that number is $53,000. Unfortunately, that doesn't tell you the whole story. That's a very deceiving number, it sounds like $53,000 where the people just didn't pay. But that's not the case. So this week in this, uh, board bracket for the fire department report, I have a new, uh, a new form in here, which shows the $53,000 that's totally due. And it also shows the steps, so we have $12,000 in current bills that just came out. They haven't, uh, they've been mailed out, but some of the people haven't even gotten their bills yet. Well, at the time this report, uh, got to you, they'd gotten their bills. So those are current. Then we have, uh, bills that are between 31 and 60 days. We have bills that are between 61 and 90 days, 91 and 100. That's the entire gamut of what's due. Now, if you look at what's over 180 days, those are typically the people who aren't gonna pay. That's $10,000. Um, I believe about $3,000 of that just went to Merchants and Medical, our collection agency. Okay? But that $53,000 is deceiving because it's, it's everything that's due. Things that are current, things that are 30, things that are 60. Medicare, Medicaid, um, if you look at this, they pay right around the 90 days. We have a $746 at 90 days, same with, uh, Medicaid. Some of these are patients have appealed, those take longer. Um, so now I'm gonna attempt to try to give this to the board every single time so that you guys can see how money gets paid. Because, uh, Trustee Kermey was correct, it just seemed very strange that we were $53,000.
Yeah.
I know you've done a great job in, in attacking this number and I applaud you for breaking it down like this, thank you.
All right, now to get back to, uh, Trustee Dorshevitz's question about fire transports. Um, once we have a staff of 24 firefighters, I believe that we can discuss transporting as a meth, method to offset costs. When we were below that number, this fire department wasn't able to transport, we didn't have the staff. We still need to replace an ambulance, that's still something that has to happen. Now, I'm gonna give you a little bit of data, um, for you guys to decide whether you, uh, you know, wanna move forward or not. So we looked at, uh, 10 communities with, with similar demographics to Plymouth Township. All 10 of these communities transport. There are Canton, Livonia, Northville, Farmington Hills, Redford, West Bloomfield, Rochester Hills, Rochester, Oxford and Auburn Hills. If you look at the, the, I have a total run volume and actually billable incidents. This report was created by, uh, the billing company for all of those communities. I got all those communities permission for their billing company to provide me with information. They use the term total run volume, that's not their total run volume. That's the total patients they bill, that's their billables. So if you look, Canton billed 4,249, Livonia 5,000, Northville Township billed 1,574. Now, if you look down to the bottom of that list, Plymouth Township's, I use the same verbiage, total run volume, but in this instance, that's the patients that we can bill, that's the transports that either Plymouth Township or HVA transported, 1,518. Very similar number. Here's all of the different, uh, communities, their billables, what the breakdown of ALS versus BLS, our breakdown versus ALS or BLS. Now, when we looked at that previous list, we saw that we were very comparable to Northville Township. So I took that, the fee comparison Plymouth Township and Northville Township. In 2016, this was Northville Township's rates. They have, I believe, since raised their rates, uh, but Plymouth Township also raised their rates too. We have a resident rate and we have a non-resident rate. So if you look at our rates in comparison to Northville Township, they're very similar. We actually use their numbers to dictate our numbers. They charge a little bit more for mileage than we do, but we chose $12 a mile because that's what people pay. You know, we're not, we don't want our adjustments to be overinflated because people don't pay more than $12 an hour. So again, they bill up the exact same as we do. Then we look at what Northville Township has done over the past three years in transporting. This is the numbers. In 2016, this is after paying their billing company, this is their net revenue, Northville Township netted $654,000. Um, in 2017, they netted $685,000. So far in 2018, they've netted $227,000. Um, at the bottom of the line, they have a trending line, they expect to net $681,000. Again-
So how long is somebody out of the community when they transport?
Great question. So, can, can I wait a couple of slides to answer that one?
What was that?
Can I wait a couple of slides because it's after this? This is, uh, this is our EMS run data, which will help answer your question. In 2015, we had 1,903 patients. Of those, 1,510 were transported by either Plymouth Township or HVA. And then there's a breakdown of who took who and, and where. Our top hospital, we transport patients to is St. Mary's Hospital. 55% of patients in 2015 went to St. Mary's. In 2016, that number increased to 59.8%. St. Mary's became a Level 2 trauma center, uh, in 2016? I believe it was 2016. Providence Park went in 2015, St. Mary's in 2016. Um, and again, you see in 2017, 68.5% of all patients transported went to St. Mary's. So obviously that's where most of our residents go. So far in, in 2018, 69.4%. I also listed the top five hospitals that people from Plymouth Township wanna go. St. Mary's, Providence Park is number two on the five-year average scale, St. Joseph Mercy's number three, University of Michigan's number four, and Beaumont Farmington Hills is number five. Fire transports, typically fire departments charge their citizens less than a private ambulance service does. Um, private ambulance services have to make money to stay in business. Fire departments have taxes and stuff like that that they also, uh, charge. So typically, we charge less. I asked HVA to give us what their costs were, they said they could not because they couldn't share their information with a competitor. That was their language. So trends in fire-based EMS, um, do I have the? Auburn Hills, just recently, in November of 2013, they decided to go, uh, transport with their fire department. Sterling Heights in the fall of 2017, and in June of 2017, Taylor Fire Department returned to transport. They had been transporting for years, they'd said, you know what, we're gonna get out of this, we're gonna hire a private company to do it. They said, no, this isn't working, they went back to transporting.
So back, did, did you get to Trustee Dorshevitz's question?
I did not, it is in the, the thing, but I will, I will speak to it. So on a transport, we, it takes us about 68 minutes when we transport a patient to the hospital. When the Plymouth Township Fire Department takes a patient to the hospital. When we don't, when we transfer the patient to HVA, we're on scene about 53 minutes. It's a 15-minute difference in time. Sometimes we have to wait for HVA, yes, um, sometimes we have to wait for HVA to arrive, um, sometimes they beat us. But the fire department, right now, as directed by the board, we let HVA take patients unless the patient's condition says that we can't wait. We are more highly trained than HVA paramedics, um, every one of us. And we've been doing this, uh, you know, just as long as most of their medics.
So how do you add, it takes 15 minutes one way to get to St. Mary's? For most parts of the township?
I would not agree with that. Most of Lake Point, it doesn't take 15 minutes to get to St. Mary's.
But Lake Point isn't the whole township?
I understand that, yeah. I use averages in time, so if you ask me-
And then it takes 15 minutes to get back?
If somebody on Northview, uh, Napier and Ann Arbor Road wanted to go to St. Mary's, yes, that would take a lot longer.
Well, the point is, if they transport, how does that affect the level of service in the community?
That's the question.
That's the question, I think, that's being asked. Obviously, they're not in the community while they're on that transport.
That's correct.
So what does that mean for our situation?
Well, as Trustee Dorshevitz pointed out, we, we, most days we run eight runs a day. Most days, one station's out, transporting the patient to the hospital, and there's no problem. There's only in this incident when concurrent runs happen, like I've already spoken of.
And certainly when you have three stations open.
With three stations open, we have three potential ambulances that could be servicing different areas of the community. And furthermore, this is the time, like our neighbors do, when they're busy in those, those one-off situations, that you call for mutual aid.
So you, so you gotta, you gotta do the analysis, of course, because you're, you got people that are out of the community. Um, you have a cost, uh, to the ambulance, right?
You mean wear and tear?
Wear and tear, so there's a, there's a cost associated with that, there's a fully loaded cost. And it could partly explain why some other communities have more staff on the, on the, on the fire. You just gotta do the analysis. We should do that as a board, we should have a strategy, because we've never, we've never discussed that.
We don't have that slide that had the revenue, do we? For the transport?
No, this one? No, I just got this from, uh, the chief of Northville Township today.
So you'll be providing that?
But I will forward it to you.
Okay. That is a lot of revenue there.
It is a lot of revenue.
Was this studied in, there was a report done by a consultant that they paid $60,000 for, we in the City of Plymouth or, maybe it was just the City of Plymouth.
That, that is incorrect, that consultant did not look at fire-based transporting. That consultant was ICMA and they did not look-
At transport?
At transport at all, that was not, their, uh, core mission was to-
What year was it?
2010.
Okay.
So obviously, that, I think-
That report was just before the city gave their, uh-
Notice.
Notice, yes.
I think, I think what Trustee Dorshevitz is saying is, all of this needs to be inputted into a very constructive, thoughtful decision.
This board has never talked about this issue, I felt that this was important to bring to you to see, you know, what you guys thought of it.
Yeah, when you say-
I'm your fire chief, I'll do whatever you want.
What you, when you say your, your transport policy is what this board has approved, you mean the board of Plymouth Township at some point approved?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, Plymouth Township Fire Department is the only advanced life support department that does not transport full-time in Western Wayne County. Now, I could go outside, I could go to Ohio, I could find, you know, paramedics that don't transport. But as far as this area, Western Wayne County, we're the only ones. When Taylor went back to transporting, we're like a man on an island. Oakland County, most of their departments all transport now. They see the value of it. We are the anomaly. Thank you. Any questions?
Any other questions from the board? Any questions or comments from the public? Yes, ma'am. You gotta come up there.
I just have a question about skill of care and then your, your focus being on fires and not on patients. That was my, that's my concern, like Huron Valley, the ambulance, their whole focus is patient care.
It's their mission.
That's all they do. So their mind isn't on a fire that could potentially happen. It's on, let's get this patient cared for and let's do it quickly. So that's my, that was what came to mind, to me, because I'm a nurse.
So I'm a licensed paramedic in the state of Michigan, I have been for 18 years. I am a skilled professional with this and I am hired highly, higher trained than almost every, well, that's exactly what you just said, is that they have a higher skill.
Knock it off.
Knock it off.
My question is not skill. That's not my question. My question is the diversion of attention. That's my question. It has nothing to do with skill. I'm sure you're just as qualified. I'm sure your skills are just as high. But when you are on a run and you then have a fire call, perhaps it's a large fire call. Your focus is not on a patient, it's on a fire call. That's my concern.
Okay. Actually, that's not true. The last fire we had in Plymouth Township, Rescue 3, was on a medical. They transported that medical to St. Mary's Hospital. Yeah, the fireman wanted to get to the next fire, but when the next run came in, the next medical, they responded to that, they did not go to the fire. We called mutual aid.
One, one thing to keep in mind-
Okay, well, that, that, I, I, we're, we're not going to have a debate over that issue. I, I don't, I don't even know where you're going.
Well, eventually, you will have the debate when you-
We did, we did.
Ask for mileage, the debate will be done then.
Yeah, absolutely. And the people will decide on what level of service they want. If they want to go back to the Ron Edwards model of basically-
It's not Ron Edwards model.
Yes, it is. It's the Ron Edwards model of a, of a volunteer fire department, paid on call, give the cops defibrillators so they can, you know, take care of grandpa. That's the way it was described to me. Then we can do that.
I'm thinking actually that anything that you do-
I'm, I'm sorry, we're not, this, we're not having, we're not having a candid forum here, okay?
No, but I think that's, it's, you asked for public comment, and she made a comment. And I think we need to respect that.
Thank you.
Now-
We are.
That is one factor in this mix, is when you have HVA, and their focus is exclusively on non-fire response, is that, how, how do you weigh that? Because there are other factors. For example, they have no requirement to respond. We have no agreement with them.
Correct.
We can ask them for data, and they can say, "We're not going to give it to you." So, we can't evaluate their response time. So, there's all of this that needs to be factored into this mix and make a thoughtful decision. So, I appreciate your comment.
So, we've gone from HVA responding to 89% last year to all of our transports, to 81% so far this year. Now, is that because the chief and his guys are doing a much better job in doing this transport? Is it HVA saying, "Well, we don't necessarily want to respond to that one"? We've never talked about that, and that's something that we've got to talk about.
And, and I totally agree, because that, you know, this board, we, we understand the chief wants to do transports, we get it. That point has been made. We get it, there's a revenue stream, there's an offsetting cost, it's, it's, there's a number of policy issues, and I think we need to objectively, you know, maybe we do that in the study session or something, but we, we, we need to objectively, we've heard, we've heard one argument, you know? It's, it, because it becomes, what happens, I, I was deeply involved in, when that ICMA study was done in 2010 or whatever, and what happens, and you're right, there was, there's not a contract with HVA. I don't know if that's the right model or not. We haven't done the analysis. But what happens is that when it is ad hoc, then an ambulance company cannot make a commitment to be in a community because it's ad hoc, and they, they don't have a guaranteed revenue stream.
It's truly ad hoc.
If they have a guaranteed revenue stream, then, then it's a different, it's a-
Which we haven't pursued any kind of negotiated contract with HVA.
For many years.
Right.
Right.
But what, we're here now, and we could do that. So, that's one alternative in the decision matrix. Here's a point to remember. If you take out the false alarms, 66% of your runs are medical.
Correct.
So, having an outside ambulance company is an opportunity to shave the peaks, Mark, that we're talking about, because you have an outside source, a contracted source, or just outsourcing some of the peak, or a way to shave the peak runs, to help you without having to staff at the peak. So, in, just without having a detailed study, it seems intuitive that private ambulance as a supplement will reduce your needed headcount, at least for the peaks.
Well, it would depend, because we just went through two contracts tonight, and we, this board, wanted to make sure we had a 30-day-out, right? We don't have a 30-day-out with HVA.
We have one day out.
We have, no, we don't.
Yeah, we do. We can start transporting tomorrow.
Not with the level of people we've got, so-
No, but I mean, we could staff up and start it tomorrow.
Okay, well, that's, that's, what I'm saying is, a thoughtful decision would say, if we had a contract with a private company, and if they didn't perform, then you can fire them.
You could fire them.
But today, we have nothing.
Right.
And the thing is, it becomes, it's such an important strategic decision, because it's a one-way, it's a one-way street. Once you make a decision that you're, you're going to do all the transports, then that private ambulance service leaves your community. They're out of the community.
Done. I, I can assure you that there are many private ambulance companies that are willing to jump in.
I'm not finished.
I'm sorry.
So, uh, so, so I just, I, I think that we have to go, we have to go into this with eyes wide open. We have to listen, we, we, we listen to this side and-
Respect it.
But we have to listen to other options. We have to make an informed decision, and we have to listen to other options, I think.
How would you want to go about doing that?
I'm not sure, because this is the first time we've talked about it.
Well, I, I would really, I'm not trying to be controversial. I need to know what it is that you're looking for, in terms of data, cost. I, I don't know, I hear a lot about Matrix and the private sector and all of that, so you gotta help me then, figure out what it is that you're looking for, so that you can make a, a decision.
Okay.
I mean, seriously, I, I don't know.
Yeah, well, we're going to need-
We have to know, we-
You gotta look at how much extra equipment you're going to need.
Yeah, the full impact.
How many extra people. Remember, we are, with, when we add the three people in July, we will be staffed at the same level that when we had 10,000 more people to cover and two extra square miles called the city of Plymouth.
Right. And I think, again, the-
Not, not the same level, still three firefighters short. We were at 27 firefighters then.
And I think the, the results tonight have shown that the runs are still, you know, they're not going down, so.
Right.
Well, hold on, we're-
I just want you to know, I have some questions.
Okay, well, hold on, so, um, anything else from the board? Because I, we are kind of in the public realm here right now.
I guess, maybe we should put it an agenda item as soon as we can, fitting in with the rest of the work that's going on. Not June 12th, perhaps, but, uh, and talk about this more.
I don't think, I don't think it's imminent. I mean, uh, but I think, I think we have, I think that should be a goal of this board, is to make a long-term strategic decision what we're going to do.
Bob, I think it is imminent, because if you're going to ask for 1.5 mils in November-
Yeah.
We have to know what we're going to do and how.
We're going to honor our contractual obligations to the employees, comply with state law, and buy new and better equipment on a current and ongoing basis.
Yeah, but that's a little bit disingenuous, because we've added six people, we will have added six people to the fire department, and-
And all of our numbers-
That's a million dollars a year.
All of our numbers assume that, and that's, I believe that's what people want, Chuck.
Well, we're going to find out.
It's not disingenuous.
We need to show them, okay, that, using it as state, saying state law is the reason-
Did not say that.
Yes, you did. You said state law.
Said it's one of the factors, I outlined at least four.
State law is the primary one, and so we, and what commitment did-
Well, I think where Chuck is going is, let's just lay it all out. It's going to make it a lot easier for everybody that says, "This is what we want to do, here's the plan," and quit kicking the can down the road, guys, this is the whole idea.
The numbers don't lie, so, you know, again, the voters are going to decide, and they're going to decide on what level of service they want, so.
One thing we could do would be to invite HVA to come to this study session, to make their presentation on why, what they're doing or want to do or could do would be in the public interest, because they have not shown up at anything here that I'm-
They were here the first night we were elected.
Invite, and, and, you know, listen to proposal, because again, I mean, they got a bias, we know, we're all, except me, we're all, you're all smart people, and they got a bias, we know that. There's bias, there's bias on this side, we know that, okay? So, we, you know, weigh it all and, and come up with a strategy, because that's, that's the problem, I think.
So, what's the bias that you're talking about here?
Well, they're heavily in favor of, they want to do transports. They want to do the transport.
Because, because why?
The, the, our fire department.
I thought the fire chief said he'll do what we want him to do.
Isn't that what you're advocating?
I am advocating, when we looked at the long-term costs, I am giving this board that's never looked at it, another avenue string.
Just asking a question, are you advocating for our fire department to do the transports?
Yeah, I, I think that's a good method. Another method is to ask for two mils, but I don't think that, I mean, there's a lot of different avenues you could go to. We have old equipment, we have a lot of different things we could do. Whatever this board decides, I will implement. I, you know, this is one option.
But, but transporting has regularly been proposed by the fire union and the fire department over the last several years.
Yeah, every presentation.
Well, that, that doesn't make it wrong.
Doesn't make it wrong.
No.
No, it doesn't. It just, it just makes it, it's a position.
Okay. I just wanted to understand.
And until I saw those revenue numbers tonight, I was kind of on the fence, saying, "Well, do we really do?" It's hard to argue with the kind of revenue numbers we're talking about that, that Northville's-
Yeah, but it does, it doesn't come at zero cost.
Oh, absolutely.
You know, there's a cost side to that equation.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. And like, that's the piece we got to talk about.
I think we're all in violent agreement here. It certainly is something that we should be pursuing.
What should, what is the something?
Worthy of more discussion.
What?
The issue of transport.
The issue of fire transports.
Oh, okay.
Can I make my comments now?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah.
They, uh, refer to exactly what you're talking about. First of all, our firefighters, ALS certified, I don't believe HVA can match their skill level, okay? And that's definitely one question to ask them. How many ALS-certified people are onboard on a regular basis, and where are their ambulances located? Sometimes they're down by the airport, let's face it, okay? The other thing I think we've forgotten is who is paying for these services?
Which services?
For our fire services, for our fire personnel.
Not transport.
Okay, who is paying for, no, not transport. It's our citizens of our township. When our men go outside our community to provide transport services, medical and transport services, to Northville Township, to Canton, to Westland, they transport. But we don't provide the same service to our own paying citizens. That's my point. Besides the fact that it raises money, think about the fact that we are not providing the same service to our own citizens.
But it raises money because they get billed, their insurance company gets billed, that's where the revenue comes from.
Sure, but they're going to get billed whether they get transported by these gentlemen or they're transported by HVA. So, let our men transport, to basically subsidize the funds, the funding. They're paying for, the people are paying for it, let them have it.
Is there any, now, you know, we're here tonight because of the budget, that's what, that's the, the real driver for this meeting tonight with, for your presentation. So, we have in our budget, I don't know, Cindy, when it kicks in, July 1st or June or something?
It was July 1st, yes.
July 1st for the hiring of three additional firefighters. So, that, this, the, the, the understanding of the budget back in November was that we were going to cut that in half, have it triggered in July pending some kind of a report on, by you.
We were going to look at how Northville Township was able to help us. We've seen that they've had a substantial increase in their own runs. While they do help us, and they are good neighbors, they're not always available.
So, maybe we should start charging them rent. They're not providing any benefit to our community.
We have many different reasons why we're collaborating with Northville Township right now. One of the things we need to do with them is build up a level of trust, which has been severely tested over the last several years.
So, done?
No, not done. So, we need, we're going to need their help on another thing, which we've talked about in the past, which calls dispatch.
I think we're giving, I think we're giving them a free ride and getting nothing.
What else do we need their help on right now?
Well noted. So, we, if, it involves dispatch and, and the assistance that they could provide in that area, so.
So, knowing that we've got these three firefighters coming on in July 1st, and knowing that we just can't hire them July 1st, we should be looking at what that process is to get the hiring.
Well, he's got a list. I, I can't explain the, the hiring process.
You want to tell us where we are right now in the Civil Service Commission?
Absolutely, I, I would be happy to. Right now, we have a list of, we have a list, we have three firefighters on that list. One of those firefighters is being disqualified. I have to get with the clerk to, to write a letter to that individual. The other two names, we would put forward to do a background check. Tomorrow, the Fire Department Civil Service Commission, which is made up of three members, is going to meet, and we are going to discuss advertising to, for the establishment of a new list that will give us the names of prospective firefighters to then review, look at, interview, and rank in a, in a hiring list.
You, will we have to vote on this, or it's done?
No.
Because it's part of the budget?
Part of the budget.
All right, so no vote required to hire the three on July 1st?
So, the chief can start the civil service process, whatever he needs to do now to make that hiring-
Are you asking the question or telling us?
I'm asking the question. As far as we-
I believe, I believe that the chief, do you need authorization from us to proceed with the civil service process?
Um, no, I don't believe so. I, my understanding is when we agreed to do this meeting, we were going, you know, we are approving the firefighters, and I was going to give you an update on where we were at this time before we did it, which obviously, you're the board, you have your choice of, you know, changing direction at this point.
Have you done the update? Or is that tonight was the update?
Yeah, that was the update, that we-
Okay, so there was no tables, the financials, what you spent, whatever went on?
I gave you all that last year, all those numbers are still good.
You probably should ref, you probably should freshen them a little bit, but-
Well, if, if you'd like to see, um, well, it's getting-
Because you have actuals now.
I, I'd like to make a motion, let's talk about it. I, you know, I move the township board begin the civil service process.
We don't need to take a vote.
Are you sure?
Yep.
Do you need authorization?
No, I do not need authorization.
Okay, so you're going to proceed tomorrow morning to hire three firefighters?
No, well, you're going to start the process.
We'll start the process.
I'm going to start the process.
It's going to take several months.
It's going to take, we have to advertise, we have to, yeah.
It's going to take several months.
But-
It's been approved in the budget.
Yeah.
Okay.
But unless this board requires me to come and ask for your permission to continue, I, I'm, I plan on moving forward, if, if you want to-
I don't think there's any precedent for that. I don't think there's any precedent for that, and it's in the budget, and the budget's been approved.
Okay, good.
Well, that's, that deals with part of the issue. What about the apparatus? What, what, where are we on that?
So, um-
I mean, we've got three old pieces of equipment. I believe trustee Heitman put his finger on the expense side of the equation a couple of meetings ago by pointing out a lot more repairs. So what are we, what are we going to be doing about that? Are you going to come back with a recommendation? I hope, since it's now 10 to 10? Well, one of the things we're going to do in the next couple of weeks, you're going to see, we're going to, I'm going to request that the board sell the cell, cell tower at the DPW facility for $400,000. Because we don't, we don't have the money. So we're, we're-
We don't have the money for what?
For a fire engine. So we're selling-
But I thought we were going to do a millage.
So we're selling surplus property. Well, I'm trying to reduce your millage, so.
Yeah, but I, 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 just generally, I'm not in favor of selling, appreciating assets, trade them for depreciating assets.
This is why I said it's 10 to 10.
Thank you, Jack.
So are we going to deal with this at another meeting?
We have to. It's too late.
No, we're just kicking it down the road like we've been doing.
Oh, come on, man.
We have been. Think about it. Don't give me the come on, man crap. We've been kicking it down the road.
All right, all right. Yeah, but you don't make strategic decisions on a whim.
It's not a whim. So anyway, let's have this discussion some other time. We all know that the equipment sucks, okay? We can stipulate to that. Well, I would like-
I'm, I'm sure that's a legal term.
I would like to have this as an agenda item for June 12th. Well, Jack, I would love to have it on June 12th, but June 12th is going to be a very busy night. All right, but this is a public safety issue, and this equipment is how old? I would love to have a study, we can do another study session in June. I'm, I'm game. Well, I'd like to suggest that the chief come back with a recommendation, and maybe, you've, you've talked about this, at least piece something up for us. We can start chewing on this, rather than put it till June 26th, or July, or August, at least we can start.
How much does a fire truck cost, right?
Yeah, and I understand there might be a plan, so can we at least, can we at least have this as an agenda item on June 12th?
I like that.
Please. Chief, in the interim, could you just do like a report or an update to everybody on what all this stuff costs?
Yeah, I can't, I mean, I, I-
You can do that.
I have the price of that fire truck right now, today.
Well, do it for all the equipment and all that-
Okay.
Stuff. Okay, thank you. Okay, thanks. Okey-dokey. Uh, let's see. That's it. All right. Supervisor and trustee comments is item G. We will not have a meeting again until June 12th. And between now and then, we've got a lot of things coming up. Memorial Day weekend is coming up soon, next weekend. With the Memorial Day Parade will be again in downtown Plymouth, starting at 9:00 a.m. Please show and show, show your support for those who have given their lives in service of our country. The Tonkush Creek, we're going to have a Tonkush Creek cleanup on Saturday, June 2nd, from 9:00 a.m. to noon. We're asking folks to meet us at the parking lot at where Snap Fitness is. That is the Riverbank Square.
Papa Romano's.
Papa Romano's, all those guys, and then they're the florist. So we're asking folks to meet us there at 9:00 a.m. Many hands make for light work, so the more folks we can get to show up, the better. There will also be a shred day with the city of Plymouth on Saturday, June 9th, at the Cultural Center from 9:00 a.m. to noon. You do have to provide proof of residency in either the city or the township. So that's all I got. Bob? Gary?
Nothing.
Jerry?
Uh, just real quick, uh, just, just real quick, wanted to thank the treasurer again for the presentation on, on our OPEB costs and stuff. That was, that was very, very well done, I think. And happy birthday to, to Jack Dempsey. He's the eldest of the group here.
Another birthday?
Getting older every minute.
Three days older than we carry.
Did you have two this year?
Mark Clinton?
All set, thank you.
Good birthday, boy.
Two things. Commendations to the clerk's office for putting up on the website information about military voting.
About what?
Military voting, because if you're overseas and you're military, active, or spouse, there's a process to vote. Federal law, and by providing the information, we're making it easy for people to cast their vote. And just for the record, play it again, another power outage. That was a great article in the Plymouth Voice. It's a beautiful Thursday afternoon in Plymouth, temperatures in the 80-degree range, bright sun, low humidity, and somehow, apparently, another tree limb caused the power outage.
I think that was just in the city, though, okay?
Uh, I heard it was also affecting Ann Arbor Road in Sheldon. So, but-
Probably had something to do with that power station that blew up, so. Chuck?
This subject is economic development and committing, before we commit the township to paying indirectly through Watuah for sewer and water, and Brownfield, which is not part of Watuah, I want to have a good discussion on it, and I don't think you can commit us as a Watuah person unless we've authorized you. Because remember, we have never, the ratepayers have never subsidized a developer's sewer and water lines.
Okay.
So keep that in mind. I know that we want to partner with Northville Township, but it's, users' pay has typically been our model, so we need to talk about it. So making commitments, I don't think you're authorized to make those commitments unless we vote, or talk about it at least, including Brownfield. Remember, we already have Brownfield of our own, and I want to understand why we need another one with the, so I don't know, maybe there's some logical reason.
There is. Any Brownfield authority that we enter into with Northville and the state of Michigan will have to come to the board for approval.
All right.
Good. Okay, and I need a motion to adjourn. Motion made by trustee Heitman. Is there a second?
Second.
A second by clerk Vorbel. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.